How are you? I think we are ready for the first discussion.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Oh, if you can excuse me one second, just to make an announcement that in the interest of just transparency and efficiency, we're going to have the briefing from our Chicago, you know, offsite team on November 13th. There will be a special session at 6 o'clock. This way, we're going to be unencumbered with, you know, with other city business, and it will allow us time and latitude to take as much time we need, you know, and also to help accommodate the families. So I just wanted to let you all know upfront, and hopefully that's okay with everybody, okay?
So.
Okay, thank you, sir.
At your retreat, one of the issues that you raised was a lack of time for generative thinking and discussion, less briefing on everything, and more time for planning and discussion. So, going forward, starting with today, where we can fit it in, we are going to set aside a period of time, roughly, say, 30 minutes, for council to have discussions on issues that are important to council. And you also said, since you wanted less briefing, my first proposal is, and I'd like to hear from you that if you agree, is that relates to our monthly financial briefings that the Director of Finance gives. We're required under the city code to provide council a monthly report on the status of the city's financial condition. We're not required to brief you on it every single month. So we would propose to continue providing you that monthly report, but only brief you on it quarterly.
You can ask questions on the monthly.
And you can always ask us questions, and we can always arrange the briefing, but we will provide you the information, but provide quarterly briefings. Also, at the end of year, total end of the year comprehensive report, as I did recently, I provided you that unaudited information, but we did not schedule it for briefing because the audited results will be ready in about six to seven weeks, and we would brief you then on that. So, again, if you want the briefings, let me know, but this is my first attempt to try to respond to some of those issues that were raised at the retreat.
Right, and thank you, Mr. Lahey. And I think one of the important things is that this allows the opportunity for each individual council members to address, you know, issues that are germane to what they're trying to do, and it's also enhanced discussion among us, you know, for better clarity and everything. But, you know, but once again, this is just, you know, expanding the scope of what workshops are supposed to be. So, you know, hopefully this will afford you all the opportunity, you know, to get significant input in on, you know, items that are, you know, very important to your district or, you know, to what's going on. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
So, the topic for today would be the Regional Broadband Authority, or actually the South Side Network Authority. That has been an issue of concern for a number of you, so we do have a public hearing scheduled for that at today's formal session. I do have Debbie Bryan from the City Attorney's Office and Peter Wallace from the Director of IT or Chief Information Officer here to answer any questions that you may have on that.
Okay, that would be great. Mr. Moss, do you have an opening statement?
I do. As I shared with you in early September, my initial rough comments on the document, I later, on September 24th, 2019, in a memo to all of you or a letter, I provide you tracked changes of all my thoughts. So I'd like just to go over that and prepare remarks.
Sure.
There's not a person around this table that objects or discounts to the goodness of the idea of a regional broadband authority. But the ends do not justify the means. The goodness of the idea does not exempt the proposal from a critical review or compliance with good governance policy. Let us review where we are. Council as a body has never discussed what elements or attributes we would want a regional Articles of Incorporation to include with regards to a regional broadband authority. Council has never reviewed lessons learned from other regional body governance initiatives to make sure that those lessons learned were incorporated in this proposed agreement. The product we received was a staff product led by three city managers no longer with us across the region with little to no input that I'm aware of from elected members of this body. To date, we have not received a pros and cons matrix about this proposal, and no proposal how good it is is without pros and cons. We've received no estimate of the valuation of the assets we are transferring. We also do not have any valuations of the assets being contributed by other proposed members of this authority. We've received no statement of the metrics by which the success of this initiative would be evaluated, and there's no real assessment of the governance structure's compliance with democratic principles. I'm going to lead off to the public, since we did not have this discussion well in advance of the public hearing. I'm going to lead off by reading my letter and then going through the document itself. Besides my Facebook Live on Friday, this topic had little public education or discussion for something of such serious consequence. And transparency would have been better served if we were having this discussion two weeks ago versus the night of the public hearing, in my opinion. But we should also share a common goal, not to sacrifice historical and democratic principles and means of accountability just in the pursuit of economic development. We can have both. Now to read my letter that I shared with all of you and for the public. Dear colleagues, the attached document in reference to the tracked changes for the charter provides tracked changes incorporating the feedback I provided to each of you three weeks back, three weeks from September 24th, on the proposed Charter of Articles of Incorporation of the Wireless Service Authority. A serious and robust discussion among city council and engagement with the public is a must for any regional body we may be looking to establish. We have a duty not to surrender the sovereignty granted to the residents of Virginia Beach in their city charter. The city charter is a covenant between the General Assembly and the residents of Virginia Beach to a regional body, in my opinion, without a public referendum. We must preserve the ability of a future city council to be able to unilaterally withdraw from any regional obligations we make. We have a duty to make sure our residents have the right to engage and hold a regional governing body accountable, as they have with their city council. We have a duty to make sure a regional body of which we are a member has the same obligations to Virginia Beach residents as we do. For example, Virginia Beach residents have a right to speak on agenda items at the authorities' meetings prior to a vote on an item. The authorities should be obligated to hold public hearings on their budget to its adoption. Now is the time to require requisite accountability measures. Likewise, city council needs a much better understanding of the funding methodologies and barriers to ensure no member municipality is subsidizing the infrastructure and operation costs incurred within the geographical boundaries of another member municipality for assets owned by the authority. I might add, assets that we are transferring. Additionally, since the authority is executing policymaking, delegated powers, no non-elected person can legitimately serve as a primary or alternate member of the authority. We are granting powers now vested in the city council as the people's elected governing body to an authority. In my judgment, we do not possess the moral authority to further delegate the people's power as the sovereign we serve to a non-elected delegate. The establishment of an agreement to this proposed charter is a political policy decision. The mayor and each joining community, non-elected city managers, should be the charter signatories. The group elected us, not the city manager. Only the city council collectively and us individually are accountable to the sovereign owners of the power we exercise in the people's name. I invite you to review the attached, either in tracked changes or in a manner comfortable to you, to provide feedback. Please share your feedback with Dana Haymaker, too, so he can provide an aggregated listing of all comments received. I received no comments that I'm aware of. As always, I remain accessible at a mutually agreeable time to discuss in person or by phone. May God bless us with the wisdom and humility to preserve the liberty bestowed upon us by our Creator as a birthright. So that was on September 24th. Now I'd like to turn to the document itself. For those of you who have it, it's page three. The state law does provide the provision that a 10% or more of the eligible voters petition for a referendum, that a referendum must be held on this topic. But yet, we haven't established a timeline for this approval or its effective date that would make that provision meaningful. So one of the things that's in here is to say that this would have to be delayed 90 to 120 days after we voted, if it were approved, to give the people a chance to, what, meaningfully collect 10% of the signatures and meaningfully exercise discretion or authority or right that's been granted to the voters. Absent that, it has no meaning, because it takes a while to collect 10% of 300-something thousand signatures, and people ought to have the opportunity to do that. So that's the first part in Section Two. Section Three deals with the part of having an alternate. This provision here talks about that any alternate, all members must be elected members to serve on this board, and that's the essence of that change. Then I went on, and if you go to page four, talks about that there's no need for me, if we're setting up an authority, we don't want to replicate the fixed cost that government has today. So it would be important, I would think, since ultimately these costs are going to be borne back and charged back to the localities on some yet unknown methodology, that we wouldn't want to be repeating defined benefit pension plans in a new authority. They would want to go to defined contribution, which is the private sector and the standard today. We would not want to incur those costs. Secondly, I think, why would we want to be paying, why there should be a salary, in my view, a salary cap on who this board is hiring to be the executive director, the chairman, or whatever title they decide to assume under the state statute? And I prescribed it as the current maximum for a cabinet official in the federal government, and I think that's more than sufficient. Then it also goes on to say that board members cannot receive compensation. We're elected officials, we serve, we serve the public. No additional compensation could be received by members who serve on this board. I think that makes sense. And it also talks about the requirement to formal approval for travel by the board members, so that the board itself is accountable for travel authorization for its members in advance of that travel being made, and also that travel expenditures incurred by the chief administrative officer can't approve his own travel, that the board needs to be able to approve the travel of the person elected. Those are all little policy controls I should not be left to the board to decide after it's formed, but should be specified in advance, in my opinion. Like our city charter, I think there ought to be ability for other people to call a special meeting besides just the chairman, but except on absolute emergencies, even special meetings should require some minimal notice so the public can, in fact, participate if they so choose. And I think we try to practice that ourselves. I thought it was important because the state statute does not preclude this group from having the power of condemnation. That was interesting. Imminent domain is not precluded by the state statute, so I thought it was important that our document should explicitly so state that the authorities shall not have the power to exercise imminent domain. Hopefully that would be well supported. And also, since this, as it's constructed, though I take exception, and we'll talk about that later, this board says that you can't leave unless everybody else who belongs to it says you can leave. Even in SIPS, we have a right to leave. We've just got to give them a one-year notice and pay our cost. But this says, once you join, you can only be released if the people who also members give you their unanimous concurrence. There isn't any other group that I know of that we've voluntarily joined that's been of that nature, where we can't say, hey, no, this isn't working out for us. We'll pay our liquidated damages, we'll meet our debt obligations, but we want to move on. And that seems to me to be troubling, but since that is the current case, if that were to be retained, that means there's no way to voting. Now, with three, with four members, I don't know how waiting voting would give you much, really. Then, they can adopt expenses or issue debt by three votes that you have to live with. So if that's going to be the nature, if that isn't amended, then any issuing of debt, any major expenditures should require unanimous vote of the body. Three members, whoever they are, shouldn't be able to impose a cost on another if you have no right to leave. So that would be a time you might want to walk away. Also, I think it's important, look, on bottom page six, that we retain the right to control our right of ways, rather than obliging that they have some presumptive right to use our right of ways. Maybe that's not in our best interest. We got to talk about that. Now, they talk about new members joining later, and they have a very, if you read through that, they have a very ambiguous term talking about that the board at the time may decide that in-kind contributions are in lieu of a cash contribution, and how they level up, that they have an equal equity and they're participating on an equal basis. But there's no methodology provided for that. There's no way how that's going to be done. I think absent some methodology, I'm concerned that, in fact, that other things, in good judgment, might intervene, and someone gives, what considers goodwill are in-kind valuations, and how are in-kind valuations assessed to make sure that everyone's really, in the private sector, you would never find something as vague as this is in terms of people exposing themselves to letting other people decide what the valuations of someone's in-kind contributions are. I think that's ambiguity we would not want, and there needs to be some methodology adopted as part of this agreement as an addendum, so we know what we're buying into. Also, it talks here about that when they're going to vote on this budget or do different things, they have to proceed a public hearing at least 10 days prior to the vote, which is what we do. We have big issues, we have a public hearing, then we have a lapse of time in between, and then we vote. These, to me, aren't about the goodness of the, whether we want a regional authority, because I support that myself. It's a question of what constitutes good governance for a regional authority, what constitutes reasonable public access and reasonable public accountability for a regional authority. Because look what we went through with H.R. TAC to finally get people the ability to speak on agenda items. That was a very laborious process, which I thought was unnecessary. Also, I thought it was important, talks about seven is Freedom Information Act, making sure that their information is just as accessible electronically as information from the city, and that they also livestream their meetings. They might not do it by cable, but livestreaming today is a very inexpensive thing to do, and all their meetings should be as transparent as possible, because I think that's the standard we set for ourselves, and they should be no less. This is the part about the budget rights on page eight. Furthermore, the adopted budget in place, prior to the inclusion of a new member, shall be modified to reflect the impact of accepting a new member and be approved, subject to the proposed new member's acceptance, to include a contribution at the time of joining equal to the budgetary impact their acceptance creates for the authority. Now, maybe there's better language than that. I'm just open, but the principle there is, we need to make sure that when people are joining, they're joining on the same terms and the same requirements financially as the initial members join. Just trying to have the very same standard. And this is, I think, something we definitely have to fix, and certainly would be something that I couldn't vote for without it, this part that says you can only withdraw from the authority if all the members who belong to it say you can. I think a member needs to retain the right to unilaterally withdraw, subject to meeting and liquidating its financial obligations, including debt service, but we should still be able to give notice and leave the organization if we so choose, or some future council. Things can change. You know, even countries don't enter into treaties that you can't get out of, and I don't know why we're entering into an agreement that we can't unilaterally withdraw from with And this gets back to, if we don't change the latter, to some extent, it shall take, this is on page 10, it shall take a unanimous vote of the authority to author and issue bonded debt instruments, and to leases greater than three years to include lease options, because now you're talking about long-term financial obligations, and the way this is constructed, a majority can send a bill. Matter of fact, a majority could decide to send Virginia Beach, or go off like a bigger bill than the other three cities, and under the current structure, nothing would preclude that in the way the current agreement is written. It has many, many flaws, and I've just touched on some of them. Oh, and this, I think, is important, but we have a lot of organizations that we belong to on a per capita basis. We just, you know, contribution, you've seen the ones we belong to. Well, this organization, that shouldn't be the basis. This is talking about operating, maintaining, recapitalizing, fiber, software package, security. So this is a whole, so, in my view, that allocating cost on a per capita basis means we get the biggest bill, independent of, we might be making the biggest donations, our land size. So I think this cost methodology should address actually the cost and the expenses being incurred by the actual authority on some realistic basis. This isn't a cost allocation MOU. This is a economic development, how to get people that last mile to grow business, but we ought to find a better way to do it than one of those two bases, which is often just easy. I think we can have a public checkbook. A lot of organizations are doing that today, but they need time to do that. Also, I think we should maintain the ability to audit the organization should we so choose. If Virginia Beach developed a community organization, we've audited it. It's an independent agency, obviously, certainly with us, but I don't think any locality should relinquish its right to do an independent audit of the authority if we're making contributions to said authority. And that's what that deals with on audit. I think that's part of our accountability for having created this organization should we so choose. I think that's the bulk of the major points I raised. As you can see, all of them deal with, one, principally making sure that the standards of accountability and transparency and governance match pretty much what we have, and there's room for improvement. This isn't the only way that can be done. I'll just say that. That's one person view how it can be accomplished. Secondly, retaining our right, as we do with other regional authorities, to withdraw if we so need be to do so. And secondly, to make sure that before we adopt this, I think we should know the dollar value of the assets we are transferring, and the dollar assets that the other organizations are contributing. And even if we don't have something approved in advance, I think there ought to be some, call it goodwill or handshake agreement, that how will that costing allocation methodology work? Because otherwise, you're entering into, you don't know what the limitations of your costs are, and it will become a must-pay bill. Now, I think we can defer the metrics, really, to the group to come up with and come back and report how they plan to measure their success, but they got to know how they're going to measure their success. But I do think that what I've proposed here isn't onerous on the operation of the organization. These are the kind of stuff we ourselves live under, and I'm just asking that if we have a regional authority, that they live under the same accountability measures and like that we do, and that we preserve our right for a future council to withdraw. And that's the conclusion of my remarks.
I appreciate that. Mr. Lahey, where do we stand right now in terms of going forward? I know in a couple cities, Norfolk has a new city manager, and I think Chesapeake is in the process of getting one on board.
My understanding is the new Chesapeake city manager will come on November 4th.
Okay.
We haven't heard back that any, that the new, either Mr. Flyer or the new city manager, I don't, one of the new, I don't know what the new city manager in Chesapeake, how he feels about it. I know the current one is very supportive, and I haven't heard that Mr. Flyer has any issues. The public hearings are scheduled for all five jurisdictions between today and next Tuesday. Some jurisdictions are actually scheduling a vote on tomorrow and next Tuesday, but three of the five are scheduling their vote for November 12th. So we certainly would have time to take this back, take these back, and discuss this with the, our counterparts.
Yeah, I think, you know, moving forward. Okay, any question, Rosemary?
Yeah, is Deborah here? Deborah Bryan?
Yes.
Let me ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
Hi.
Thank you.
So I understand this is the framework to start out, and that all, which is kind of amazing, all of the attorneys from each of the five cities have agreed to this.
Well, we don't have the authority to agree to it.
No, but we just agree to the language to present.
I guess, but let me make one clarification. Clarification is between, there's two different things here. We have a comprehensive agreement, which Mr. Moss has just gone over, and we have a resolution. The comprehensive agreement is really, has, is separate and apart. That's really for you all to look at. It's how the five cities have determined or started to determine how they're going to do business together. The legal document is the resolution, which you, really, Mr. Moss did not have many edits to that. That is what the public hearing is about tonight, just the resolution to form this authority. Once the authority is formed, then we will have the governing mechanism to do all of the others. So the comprehensive agreement, anything in that still can be changed. This is really so that by the, as soon as possible, the authority can be formed just by sending everything to the State Corporation Commission. That's what everyone's public hearing is on. That's what the, all the resolutions are for, and then the comprehensive agreement can certainly be changed. Yes, sir.
So most of what Mr. Moss brought up is going, could be dealt with at a later date?
It's a, it is a separate document, but, I'm sorry, Mr. Moss.
It took one point. The effective date of the resolution is material, because that's what gives the people the right to exercise the statutory right to gain a petition to force us to referendum. So that is a material difference. The effective date of the resolution is material.
And right now, the effective date in all the resolutions that have been published would be November 15th.
I would say it would be 90 to 120 days since then, to give the public the opportunity to really gather the petition signatures necessary. Otherwise, the petition option of the state statute has been made, rendered meaningless, and I don't think that was the intent of the General Assembly.
But if we pass the resolution, then some of the points that Mr. Moss has brought up can be discussed and revised in the regular governance of the authority, is that right?
That is correct.
And that will come back to the councils to vote on? Is that right?
That is correct.
So, I just would like to say that this is a really exciting time for us. We're always hearing regionalism, regionalism, why don't we all work together as a region? And this is, this is a really golden opportunity for that. I think there are some questions that Mr. Moss had that we can probably answer, like, for example, 30% of the design has been already purchased and paid for.
Correct.
And the full design's going to be about $1 million, and everyone will end up paying $200,000 each.
Correct.
So everybody's going to have a fair share in the design cost. And I think we're pretty far along in ours, aren't we?
Well, the design cost, we would put out, HRPDC, who's been working with us, Mr. Crum, would put out an RFP, and the RFP then would do the rest of the design, the 70, remaining 70% of the design. Once all the design is done, then a lot more of the questions that have been put forth can be answered, such as, how much is it exactly going to cost? How much is it going to save each city? What are the technical things we need to do?
And we are going to get a cost savings just for our government alone each year. We're already paying for internet services.
Mm-hmm. Correct. That's something Peter can talk to.
Okay, John, then Jess.
This is, this is one of the things that I think should trouble everyone at this table, is that we are having this discussion, I look at, when you vote on mergers of companies and what you go to prospectus, you don't get this homework after you've voted as a shareholder. And the Security Exchange Commission obviously has higher standards than we do. We should try to emulate those. You get that information upfront. And if we have this business case, when we first discussed this back in September, maybe it was late August, was Dave Hansen was still here, so probably that late August timeframe, is, I didn't see this, this business arrangement. I didn't see these cost numbers. I don't see any of this, and now I hear a reference, I know Rosemary's a liaison, but liaisons don't make decisions. Council as a body makes decisions, and this, this information hasn't been transparently shared. The public doesn't have the benefit of it. You know, we don't have any of that, and yet, we're being asked still today, and not having it at this moment, a comprehensive business case analysis, what can we, what can we achieve regionally that we can't achieve bilaterally? All these things that are due diligence, which I think, you know, anyone of sufficient curiosity would want to know, but yet, we're voting. So that's one thing. So I think we ought to have all that. We shouldn't have to be soliciting it at this late date to get it, my personal view. I understand you're just approving the content. It's three, four city managers and staff that put this together.
And there was five, well, five city managers, five CIOs, the CIOs of each, of the five cities, and then there was one council liaison from each.
Like four cities signing this?
Five. Suffolk, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake.
The five South Side cities.
The five South Side cities, correct.
So, so I'm just saying that's, and I do believe that the effective date is key, if we really mean and want to respect what the General Assembly gave the voters, the residents of Virginia Beach, in the statute itself, the right to a referendum if they wanted one. An effective date doesn't provide for that.
Well, we're not voting on it tonight. We're just having a public hearing.
I know, but, but the resolution, people are looking to vote, is for a five November effective date, and if that's not a date we're going to adopt, that'd be important for other people to know.
Okay, Jess?
I had a, same question about, well, I had a question about something Rosemary asked you. So, we can vote on this resolution, but we don't have to have the governing document with it when we vote?
Well, what happened is the cities and towns, localities can't provide broadband by law, and there's only one avenue through which we can, and it's a broadband authority through the Wireless Services Act. So the General Assembly came up with the Wireless Services Act, and that's what we are following very specifically. are following very specifically with all five cities to have a joint resolution on the same date. So all this is for, is just to form, like a State Corporation Commission filing, when you just form a corporation, that's really all we're really doing at this point, is forming the authority.
Okay, so I'm going to ask again a different question, kind of the same question, but when we form this authority, there has to be a mechanism in which it's governed?
Correct. And that is the Articles of Incorporation that are in the resolution.
But the, the rules that they have to follow, we won't have, when it's created.
Technically, the rules that you have to follow are all within the Code section of the Virginia Wireless Services Act. There, the comprehensive agreement is something that all five city managers decided that they, together with the city council members, wanted to put something together to just govern how they would do business. But a lot of it is boilerplate that's already in the act. So regardless of the comprehensive agreement, we can even just, if you didn't, decided not to adopt that, not to do anything with it, what you would have then is just the resolution with the Articles of Incorporation forming the authority, and then the Virginia Code section under the Wireless Service Authority Act would just take over as far as governance.
So I guess then, Tom, can we get a copy of that Code section so we understand if, what I'm concerned about, and I appreciate everything you've done, Rosemary, and I appreciate what you've done, John, in terms of providing, I guess, kind of a second option, I'm concerned about, well, what if everybody gets to the table in their respective municipalities and goes, oh, I don't like this at all, and we've created an entity that we can't get to an agreement on a comprehensive agreement, and then it defaults to whatever the Act says? And I don't, I've never read it, so I don't know what that says, and maybe it's fine, and maybe that, maybe that is what we prefer, is just to default to that. So I'm a little worried about that. So if we can get a copy of that, so we, at least we know worst-case scenario, that's what happens. And then the other thing I'm interested in is the discussions the other cities have had, because I, this to me feels, and I could be feeling, hearing this wrong, but it feels like this is something all the city managers got together and made, and that the, the respected councils have just kind of been along for the ride. And I don't see how we have any, we're going to create this entity, and we're going to say it's okay, but I don't know what, what's Chesapeake saying? What do those members feel? What is Suffolk saying? You know, it'd be nice to see their minutes of their discussions, because maybe they've seen something that John hasn't, if that's possible. But, you know, I, I would like to know all of the information before we vote on this. I, I share a lot of the same concerns. I don't really oppose the idea of this, but I am a little concerned about what it's, what it's going to look, look like and what we're agreeing to. I do definitely agree that we should have the ability to get out if we don't want to be in it anymore. But I'm, I am very concerned about hearing what the other municipalities are saying. And I don't know if it's possible for us to have some kind of group meeting, probably not, and that's fine. But if we could read their minutes so that we can share in what they're discussing, I think that would be helpful. Most of my other questions I can leave for later, but I, I would also be interested in knowing what the, what the, how we determine who gets shares, what part of what cost. That was something I had a really hard time understanding when I read the document. But, and then I also agree with the referendum issue as well, so that's all I really have.
John?
I want to point out, the Articles of Incorporation do cover the thing about taking unanimous vote to lead, if I remember right. That was in the poor Articles of. So some of the comments that I made are very material to the Articles of Incorporation. And I don't want people to think that all the comments that I made were on this agreement. And once they're established, the ability, when you break and make, separate them, they're not, you're only getting this when we get this. If you don't adopt this, you don't get this. Once they're out here, you know, there are ability to say, this is now the agreement, and imposer will, then is not going to exist. And the state statute doesn't preclude for, preclude us in the Articles of Incorporation of putting more strenuous issues in control within that document. It only specifies the bare minimum. And this is the issue we ran in with HRTAC, trying to get the public the right to speak on agenda, because the General Assembly didn't explicitly provide for citizen participation, didn't provide for citizens' access to information. They just basically operated for a longest time on an autocratic style, to be kind. And so I don't think that's a behavior pattern that we want to repeat on something. I, I totally support this. I think this makes a lot of sense. But again, doesn't make, doesn't have to be done at the expense of creating another body that is insulated from the people it's supposed to serve, and to be accountable to the people it's supposed to serve, and only have elected people serving on it, even though they're not elected to the authority. And that's why I thank you for saying you approved it as the legal compliance, not as to the content of representing what's in our best interest.
Okay, Guy?
Just to be clear, Ms. Bryan, could you, could you just confirm your understanding that the Articles of Incorporation, as written and as suggested, amended by Mr. Moss, are both, would comply with the statute?
The portion about, if I could just, for one second, talk about the withdrawal part. The withdrawal provision, the reason that it wasn't expected to be unilateral is because, unlike some other authorities, there will be physical assets in every one city, and that's what makes the entire ring. So if Chesapeake, say, unilaterally decides to opt out, there's a big hole in the ring. So it's not that you couldn't get out, but we would have to make some mechanism, either to go around that or something. So we wanted to make it hard to get out for that specific reason. That is one of the things that's in your Articles of Incorporation version. Other than that, and that's something that we can put it in there, however, I would assume, though, the other cities would want it tweaked in some way so that we wouldn't have a hole in the ring. That was the.
Jess?
I really wasn't finished. It was kind of a stage question, but I haven't just finished. So the answer to my question is?
Yes.
Yes.
Though legally sufficient, I don't know that it's.
All right. I just, I understand, and there may be some issues with language. And then my other question is, to the best of your knowledge, are both the, what are they calling this? The comprehensive agreement, which I assume are essentially like bylaws, as would relate to Articles, as would relate to statute? Are the bylaws, both, as written and as Mr. Moss has suggested, do you have an opinion as to whether they are in compliance with the Articles which are in compliance?
I believe that they all are, yes.
In both cases?
In both cases, yes. And wherever they weren't, for whatever reason, when we looked them over, we let Mr. Moss know.
Jess, and then Rosemary?
Going back to the leaving, if we wanted to, we could theoretically put language in that said, if you're going to leave, you have to provide the connect, pay for the connection so that the loop is not broken, something like.
We could do something like that, something like you will give an easement to the authority to be able to continue there. There would be some sort of a negotiation to get out.
But we could change the language to, so that the loop would not have to be broken.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think that's probably where we need to be at, is instead of saying you can't leave, say, if you leave, this is what you're agreeing to, even if you don't want to be a part of it.
Right. So monetary damages wouldn't be sufficient, basically?
Well, it would if you wanted to connect the loop outside of the city boundary.
Theoretically, that would be more of a technical question for Peter.
Okay, Rosemary?
So we're going to be, this is coming back for us to vote on November 12th?
November 12th, correct, yes.
So in the meantime, we should be able to get a lot of our questions answered. And I guess when I think about the ring, I always think about the old Christmas lights, and if you unplugged a light bulb or took one strand out, everything went dark. And that's kind of how I see this. It's why it's really important, because it's a ring and we have to be connected. So it's a lot different than most other organizations where, yeah, one person pulls out, well, maybe there's a gap in funding, but not in operations. This really affects operations.
That's true.
So hopefully, we can get a lot of the questions answered. We have quite a bit of time between now and November 12th. And I'm sure you'll be available for questions and all of that.
Absolutely. Peter as well.
Okay, anybody else? Michael?
Upon reflecting the discussion, I want to thank you, and I want to thank the team, everyone in city staff who's worked on behalf of the residents of Virginia Beach to move this discussion forward. And I also want to thank Rosemary and everyone throughout the region who have worked hard on this project, this innovative project, which will improve the access and delivery of technology services to the residents of Virginia Beach. And I just want to emphasize my view of the need for regional collaboration and cooperation. And I don't mean in any way to suggest that anything that was discussed here was outside the scope of that tenor. But we do need to be cooperative. We need to think of our neighbors in the region as partners, and I think that we need to be very respectful and thoughtful about their process. And so as we are, as we're making steps to protect the sovereignty and to protect the interests of the residents of Virginia Beach, we need to do so, understanding that regional cooperation is in the interest of the residents of Virginia Beach. And I want to make sure that nothing leaves this table, from my perspective, that runs contrary to what's best for this, the region. And connecting these five cities through the, through the ring will be a huge benefit to everyone who lives in those five cities. So I'm very encouraged by the process, and I just want to take one last time to emphasize my personal support for that type of regional cooperation and thankfulness for your efforts toward it.
Thank you.
Rosemary, and then Guy.
So Deborah, when you sent out the information, please, if you could, go into depth. There's going to be a lot of benefits that we're going to be getting from this. We're going to be getting benefits from, from our stormwater, our public safety, transportation, our schools, economic growth. I mean, just a couple weeks ago, we approved NextGen. Well, NextGen wouldn't be coming here if the cables and the ring wasn't going to be coming into place. This morning, the authority approved the, the meet-me-room and the, the conduits of the hotel where we've been building, the conduits that are coming in to be the off-ramp to the transportation highway, which is going to be this ring. And the authority just approved that this morning. And so there's a lot of really good things that are, are happening, and there's so many benefits. And I think it's a golden opportunity that, we didn't selfishly say it's just ours. We opened it up to the region so we could all benefit. And if we weren't doing this, the cables and their connectivity would just bypass us and head on up through Ashburn in Northern Virginia. So this is our chance to create jobs and create a lot of benefits for not just us as a city, but our citizens in the region.
Okay, Guy, and then Jess.
I'd just like to say, as to Mr. Berluci's comments and Ms. Wilson's comments, I completely agree with everything they just said. And I, I take a second seat to no one in terms of supporting regionalism. But I do hope we can work these things out, and I think Michael's comments in that, I don't think he implied, and I just want to make sure, that we should accept the draft that's on the table just because some group of administration has. I think some of John's comments are, are very much on the money. They're very helpful. I'm troubled by, somewhat, by the effective date issue, just not knowing what precedents we may be setting for not approving things that may take a period of time that we want to do, do more quickly. And, and maybe John's response to that is, so be it, but I just haven't had time to contemplate that, I guess. But I do think, I do think his comments are worthwhile and should be shared, shared with the other cities and as helpful, attended friendly amendments to the work that's been done, and I thank him for his work on it as well.
Okay, Jess?
I just wanted to say, I know that sometimes when, when you come out and you criticize something, it can be perceived as not being an advocate for it, because I think, I do really believe this is a great opportunity for us. And I, one, don't want my criticisms to seem as though I'm saying, forget it, this is a bad idea, because it's not. I do, however, really want to make sure we're getting to a place where we're all comfortable. And I would like to emphasize that, first and foremost, we are not advocates for our region, but advocates for the people who elected us. And while I think there is great advantages in collaborating regionally, we do have a responsibility to make sure that this contract protects us. And that's where I feel like we might have a shortcoming. And I hope that, moving forward, whenever we discuss regional projects, that we, we keep in mind that we are first here to protect the citizens that put us in these chairs. And so I'm really looking forward to it. I don't believe that there is not a way we can't get to where this is going to be the document that we're all comfortable with. But I, I just, I'm, I'm optimistic, but I also think that practicing that caution is a, is a, a good thing to do. So that's really the last thing.
John, then Michael.
I want to thank, first of all, everybody for their constructive feedback. That's very helpful. I think there's a common ground here. I think there's also a lesson learned here. This thing moved way too long before it was brought to our attention, in terms, before they had this timeline that we seemed, I never forget this, Admiral used to work for, he used to have a sign over his desk, "Your failure to plan is not my emergency." And it always stuck with me. And what happens often is the staff with due diligence and who are the liaison are moving on a path, but yet their deadline at the end doesn't change, and what gets consumed is council deliberation time. And we're the people that end up sucking up the gap to meet a deadline, to help us advance and bring prosperity to our community. So I don't know if there's other things like this in the pipeline, but sometimes it's fair to have something looked at 50% or 25, and having milestone reviews so that these issues that maybe the staffs aren't as sensitive to, which often are governance issues and representing the civic interest of the citizens who we all work for, sometimes get lost in the, the mechanics of getting the goodness accomplished. And I, I've been guilty of that, my own staff works, so I know how that works. I speak from experience. But, but I also know that's why we have more frequent reviews and maybe looking for it. I don't know what else is in the pipeline that we, that's maturing, but I'd rather see it sooner, allow everyone to have their input while it's still incubating, versus when we're at the end and we want to deliver the truck and push the goods out, which is, sounds like where we're kind of at. Now we're going to be looking as if, you know, we are holding up the process. But I do appreciate the, all the, and I think there is a common ground here, but I would offer that as a lesson learned for other things that are in the pipeline.
Thank you, and Michael?
I just want to offer a clarifying remark, since Mr. Tower referenced my comments earlier that, and I agree with him, in that nothing I said was meant to imply that we wouldn't have an opportunity to work through some of the points that were raised here. And I further want to, to, to say that I appreciate Councilman Moss's suggestion about sometimes working through some of these concerns on the early side as these projects develop so that we can address them collaboratively and early, in that we're not perceived as a municipality that's holding up a regional project. I'm deeply concerned about that. And to Councilwoman Abbott's point, I would say that I think by almost every analysis, the improved access and delivery of technology services is good for the residents of Virginia Beach, first and foremost, as well as is good for the region. So we've got to work through this, and I, I hope that nothing I said was meant to suggest that we can't or shouldn't. It's just that I also want to make sure that Virginia Beach isn't perceived as a city that's holding up regional cooperation. And we've got to be thoughtful and deliberate and careful about that posture.
Okay. Anybody else? I just want to thank you all for a very good discussion. Mr. Moss, thank you for bringing it forward, but once again, I thought the, you know, the comments and interaction was very good. Guy?
As a member, as a member of the legal profession, I just would say, one of the most interesting things to me is a concept that really, I really wasn't familiar with until I came on this council, and that was an engineering concept of 30% design or 50% design. And I just want everybody to understand, that, that concept is completely unknown in the legal profession. There is a tremendous focus on getting it right before it is exposed, and, and it is just the way most of us were taught how to do it, that we wouldn't expose it to your client until it was something you were completely happy with. And I just want to take up for the lawyers who've worked on this, obviously. I think they've done a good job, and they've, but, you know, the clients ultimately are the ones making the decisions, and, and I think it's a collaborative effort among the, the administration, their lawyers, and us to, to make it all happen. And I, I agree also. And I, I agree also, it's been a very good discussion. Thank you.
Your, your Bernard.
I had a chance to listen to all the comments, and I just want to say that I am proponent for regionalism. And I do believe that regionalism is good for the region, the city, the citizens. It's good for everyone. And when I see a proposal like this, I certainly do, as with any agreement and contract, there are some things that you have to tweak, you have to, you know, work and get those things together. And I believe we can do that, but we can also move forward in a consistent manner, without delaying the process, to make sure that we get the things in that we need to approve the agreement. But also, making sure that we let the key partners know that we've been working so, so wonderfully with, or just working diligently with these last, how many ever months it's been.
Years.
And years that it's been. So, we want to make sure that in that diligence that we have been working with them, that we let them know that we are interested, we would like to move forward, but there are just a few things that we want to, you know, tweak and work on.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing. I've been a couple of videos produced, and some of the near people may not have seen them. Deborah, can you send those out? Because there's some really great videos that talk about the ring and what it's going to do for us, and, and as a region. I think that could be helpful, especially for some of the new members, too.
Jess.
I don't mean to prolong, prolong a conversation. I just wanted to add, I think it would be very good that we get as much of this out to the public as possible, because in my feedback that I've been getting, people do not understand.
Right.
What we're doing. And if there's videos.
There's really good videos.
Let's get them out, because I think public outreach on this, if we want the buy-in, we should be giving as much of it out as we can. That's it. I don't want to.
We have an older one, and I think Chesapeake did a really good one, too. It's long, but it's good.
Okay. Thank you, once again. Great discussion. Okay, moving on to shared mobility services, motorized scooters. Mr. Solis, thank you.
So counsel, as I indicated in my transmittal letter, due to changes that the General Assembly made, you would be wise to consider legislate, consider changing the city code by the end of this year, or you might find yourselves precluded from doing so. But I'm not going to dive any deeper into that. I'll let the city attorney, if you have questions, pick up on that part. But Brian Solis, Assistant to the City Manager for Special Projects, is going to give you a presentation on where we are and what we are recommending.
Thank you, Mr. Leahy, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Stiles. Thanks for having me. The last time I was before you on shared mobility services, focusing on motorized scooters, was August 6th, where we kind of outlined a proposed process where we were going to have parallel work on stakeholder involvement and community engagement, and then staff work at the Shared Mobility Services Task Force level with subject matter experts there, and then marrying those two processes together to come to you with recommendations. In between that time, on August 20th, an ordinance was brought before you to make two changes to the city code. One was to prohibit the motorized scooter use on the shared lanes of Atlantic Avenue, and the other was to prohibit them on streets that had speed limits of greater than 25 miles an hour. And so, what we're with you today to do is, in four ways.
Technology is your best friend in work. You're going to need some of it. If that doesn't work, we'll get it.
So, four general ways, and that is to summarize the stakeholder feedback and community engagement, go over the city code recommended changes, and I'll tell you the difference between that and the scooter franchise request for proposal terms, and then seek your direction on recommended next steps. So to that extent, we've kind of had two parallel stakeholder involvement processes. We've had more focus group qualitative discussions face to face with all of these groups, many of them more than once, both civic and business associations. And we've kind of contacted, or there were 315 individuals, at least, during these meetings that, that were present and provided their feedback. And I'll go over the questions, the very broad-based questions that we went over. These all went on two or three a week for July, August, and September, and on to the We did parallel with that. Our, your communications office had the community engagement survey, and over 5,800 respondents to that, with 129,000 comments. So needless to say, it was one of the more responded to surveys that, that you have done, or that the city has done. And one thing that's important to note is that these are not statistically reliable results. It's kind of a snapshot, in that sometimes individuals may have different devices, different computers, and can respond more than once. But in general, even given the amount of responses, I think it's, it's safe to say you kind of get a pulse of where your residents, what their feedback is about these issues. Now, also, folks could respond from anywhere in the world, frankly, or anywhere in the region. So that's something to, to consider. We had four, we had really five questions. Four were structured, and, and the fifth was open-ended, provided open-ended comments on it. I kind of tried to provide a summary on those. On the left, and, and the briefing is, is right before you at your places, if you can't read the screen. But the first question was in general, where do you feel like motorized scooters could, should be prohibited? Now, I preface all of this by, we're currently operating under assumption that you cannot prohibit motorized scooters citywide, that you have the authority through the state code to regulate them, but not necessarily prohibit them citywide. So, all of these items, on, on all roadways or streets of 25 miles an hour or greater, boardwalks, sidewalks in the resort area, school properties, town center, and the bike path parallel to the boardwalk, all of those are currently prohibited now. And there seemed to be overall support for continuing those, where you start to get below 50% as regarding town center and bike paths. There were some, I guess, mixed feelings about that. On the right-hand side, on your right-hand side, is where do you feel that motorized scooters should be permitted? And at 80%, the majority felt like everywhere that bicycles are allowed, with the exception of the, or basically while still prohibited. 50% believe shared use paths, such as Norfolk Avenue Trail, and, and then on all roadways, the speed of basically local roadways of 25 miles per hour or less, and Atlantic Avenue shared use lanes, folks were basically split on that. I'll go to the next, please. Thank you. As I roll through these next series of feedback, all of the feedback you see will be whether they felt like, the response felt like it was essential or not important. The majority, vast majority, felt like all of these recommended ways that e-scooter companies, and we use motorized scooters and e-scooters interchangeably, because they're primarily electric scooters that are charged, what can the companies do, in, in effect, through these franchise licenses, to make rider behavior safer? Provide education, just like with bicycles and the rules of the road, in general, education is an important part. We currently don't have a mechanism to necessarily require that now. Require safety and rules of the road tutorials before each ride. So that could be a video on your phone that requires you to view it, in terms of a period of time that you're required to watch it. A lot of those, a lot of these are already in place with majority of companies. The one you see spike up is geofence, so scooters do not work in prohibited areas. And we're currently utilizing that now, or the companies are utilizing that now. And what that basically means is using technology to either slow, basically slow down scooters to the point that they're no longer can, can operate efficiently in the areas that are prohibited. And then, you can also regulate speed. Roughly 50% or folks felt like we should be able to regulate the speed throughout the city. Okay, next thing, Dave. The ones that spike here, these are, again, the same question about what e-scooter companies can do to ensure safer rider behavior. Folks wanted person-to-person interaction with the companies to provide feedback, either through email or a phone hotline, in terms of inappropriate riding or parking. And then on the far right side, basically employ a local management company or an arm of the companies to operate within the city itself, so that you would have a more responsive company employee to respond to issues with regard to parking and riding. There is way, there are ways that we can try to induce safer rider behavior, either through incentives or penalties. And then, some folks, you know, between 50 and 60% felt like we should coordinate that first mile, last mile from transit stops, when you'll see a lot of these scooters today, whether it be in Norfolk or still in Virginia Beach, staged at transit stops. So if I could go on to the next, please. Thank you. The next would be, continued the same question, same thought, and the main spike that you see there, and on, on your right, would be, folks wanted to make sure that these scooters are visible at night, in terms of headlights and rear lights. That was an important piece. All of these, the majority, the majority supported. There were some, you get to a little bit, close to 50% with regard to the insurance issue. A lot of folks feel passionate about wearing helmets and provide photo identification that you have your helmet on. There are, there is a company, at least one, that is requiring you to do that. And I'll speak to this a little bit later. On the far right, data sharing is important with these motorized scooters, in that you'll see in a little bit that we do propose to limit the total amount of scooters throughout the city. Sharing the data helps us to work through a third party, through geographic information systems, to see live, and looking back through reports of, as to how many scooters are currently rentable in the city by company. And we can also search that by geographic area as well. And there's a number of analytics that you can do associated with that data. You can publish maps, heat maps, that show the frequency of use within certain corridors, and you can get a sense of the number of riders and their average distance per ride, the amount of time they've used it, in terms of its mo, its, its use as actual mode of transportation. And you can start to do some analytics to, if that's a, if, is this a real mobility choice, or is it amusement? So, thank you. The next would be what the city should do to foster safer rider behavior. And so, a lot of this was, would be with regard to either staff enforcement or city code changes. And in terms of enforcement, new signage, regulating scooters. Currently, we do not have any up that necessarily, that focuses primarily on motorized scooters. One, there seems to be a consensus on amongst the companies and city staff and, and your residents and visitors are limiting one rider per scooter. We would think that that would be common sense, but you do see that occurring a good bit. And it was the source of several of the injuries that have occurred. Limit the total number of scooters. Well, you see that one, limit one per scooter, one person per scooter is spiked way up, where the, the vast majority of folks go that way. And then, limit the number of scooters operating in the city. So, throughout the country, depending on the size of the market, it varies. So Norfolk has chosen to award one franchise license to one provider. I'll show you an example in a little bit, where Arlington has seven companies, and takes a more free-market approach. We're, we're kind of somewhere in the middle, and I'll, and I'll go over that in a second. We'll go to the next, please. Those 129,000 comments, there was no way to efficiently provide those to you. You know, it, it's a, it's a fairly large report, but the, and I appreciate the Office of Communications pulling this together. This word will kind of gives a snapshot of the terms that occurred the most frequently. And you'll see a lot of them are related to safety and concern about safety. And then, some of the smaller ones, and, and folks use different adjectives. This was the open-ended question, about what other actions should be taken to create a safer environment while accommodating this new mobility mode of motorized scooters. So it was very open-ended. Folks have provided, this is totally unprompted response, if you will. So, a lot of the comments related to transportation, or some of the positive ones are more interspersed by the different adjectives people use, but then you can see the more prevalent ones were concerned about safety. And some of the longer terms that folks consistently used are here at the bottom. A balance of providing more responsibility on the companies, to creating more e-scooter-friendly areas, to, you know, some folks believe that scooters could be a good viable mobility choice if used properly. So, city code recommendations. The key factor with city code recommendations is, and the difference between franchise license agreement terms are, that this applies to whether you own a scooter or you are renting it through a company. So this would apply citywide, even if you owned a scooter or, or one of these qualifying devices, and, and would need to be enforced that way. So, we agree with the code. We agree that, that in terms of professional recommendation, to continue on with that code change that was provided on August 20th, that's currently in effect, and that is that motorized scooters not operate on roadways that are, have speed limits of greater than 25 miles an hour. Now, that's the street. We do believe that adjacent shared use pathways and sidewalks, for example, Dam Neck Road, for example, is still viable to be able to ride the scooters on those spaces. But on the roadways, 45 miles an hour, no. The key one that Mr. Leahy talked about before, this, the second bullet here, is taking advantage of that state code provision that basically allows localities to require franchise agreements to operate in the city. The current interpretation is that as, as of December 31st, 2019, that that provision would go away. So, that's something, that, of all four of these, that is the one that we should, that we recommend moving forward, even if you don't award a franchise license agreement, although there aren't too many other choices other than to do that, but that you at least adopt that option, so you have that option in your code to do that, as opposed to losing it. The third bullet is with regard to what we were talking about earlier, making it a code requirement that, you know, only one rider per scooter. We believe that's a, a, a basic safety provision. And then, another one would be to operate these type of devices at a speed no greater than 10 miles an hour. A recreational bicyclist travels at about nine to 12 miles per hour. A recreational bicyclist, only like a beach cruiser, and, you know, necessarily, doesn't necessarily have gears and what have you. So that's kind of the, kind of litmus test we, we put to that speed limit. Someone asked Mr. Mathias, when they were reviewing, when you were reviewing your legislative agenda, were there any items with regard to motorized scooters? At that time, the conversation and the discussions had not evolved enough to provide a recommendation in that packet, but one that we believe should be viable, and it's not in your package that you would vote on tonight. But, so it would need to be amended at some point in the near future, between now and the General Assembly starting, would be that all riders be at least 16 years of age and have some type of driver's license credential. And the thought process behind that is that, at some point, they were educated on and tested on the rules of the road. And this is different from a bicyclist, in that these are motorized devices. So, we believe that this should be something that, you know, could universally be accepted, even by the motorized scooter companies, because their current age limit and their user agreements, for the majority, is 18 years of age. So in general, this should be something that should be supported by even the motorized scooter companies, but it's something to consider. If we go on to the next, please. Now, these next series of slides is meant to just give you an idea of, and it's not all inclusive, but it provides you the major summary of terms that, that we were proposed to put in the franchise agreement. I'd like to thank Mr. Stiles' office and Dana Harmer on his work on, on helping us pull this together. We are at a, at a place where it's, it's, it could go out soon, within, within a week or so, should council support the direction for that. So this one's with regard to parking. So, a lot of the feedback that you received, primarily during the resort season, and while, you know, during the warmer weather months, is how these devices are parked and where they're parked. So, one thing to consider, at the top term up here, would be that we not allow motorized scooters to be parked in the grass or landscaped areas between people's property lines and the edge of the pavement or the curb. And that's strictly grass areas and landscape areas that have to be maintained. And the thought being that that inherently conflicts with the code requirement that, that you maintain that space between your property line and the edge of the roadway. And whether you be a resident, a business owner, or the city that's responsible for ma, maintaining that, maintaining that, you shouldn't have to move these scooters and move them back when you're maintaining those grounds. That's the thought behind that. These other two are more about aesthetics and orderliness and the ability for folks to be able to, where you do have a wider than normal sidewalk or concrete in public spaces that, that you group them. And I'll show you some, some visual examples of that here too. Eight, you know, and we've, I'd like to thank your plane department and your SGA office. We've developed already scooter corral guidelines as a draft just to be able to make sure that if we're going to propose to add, support scooters in the resort area, that we have sufficient parking to place them. And that's why we went through that exercise. I'll show you some images of that in a second. And then citywide, that they, the scooters be grouped in areas of four, no more than four. And we could talk about the spacing, you know, no more than 250 feet, no less than 250 feet apart for those four, and it gets kind of into the details. But the thought is, is that provides some orderliness to how they're staged throughout the city. So here are some examples of, in the resort area, and we've gone, the staff has gone through every block. And primarily where they're recommended are within the western side of the connector park. So the east side of Atlantic Avenue, this is Atlantic Avenue, just in from there, say 15 to 20 feet are areas that have been identified for these parking corrals. And we would, through the franchise license process, work with the companies to require, if they're not already, riders to park their devices in these areas either by incentives or by penalties and that they show, that they demonstrate that they do that. If we go on to the next, David, thank you. These decals would need to go kind of in those spaces or something similar so that we can clearly identify where those parking areas are. And they have a shelf life of about a year. So when we get over the fees, we'll talk about how we can try to sustain these type of designated areas. This is an example in some larger intersections where you do have wider sidewalks primarily just as folks filter towards busier intersections that we may require, could require designated parking areas in some of those major areas. Thank you. Some additional terms, I know this is a lot, but it's important that we go through these because these are some of the, they're all important, but these are some of the critical ones. We do think that a manageable number is for scooter franchise companies. If you get a lot more than that, it's very, it's, it gets become, gets to become a little bit more difficult to manage as a locality and for residents to determine what scooter was owned by who. And we just feel like, and looking at all of the different programs that are around the country and focusing on Virginia, that four was a good number for us to consider. Now, you may not have, if you were to open this up, four responsive franchise companies to submit. You may have two, but there have been six that have been interested in the city that have contacted us. We propose a limit of, for, for year one, a maximum of 1,000, and that any franchisee be given the opportunity for up to 250 scooters each. If you only had three respondents, in theory, you could, you could split that three ways if there are, if those are all responsive. And that for the designated pedestrian zone of the resort area, and I'll show you a map of that in a second, it's basically Bird Neck Road, 42nd Street, Atlantic Ocean, Rudy Inlet, that for that entire area, 40%, no more than 40% of the scooters are within that entire area. We believe that's a manageable number. It's about half of what we've heard the maximum was in the resort season, in the resort area this past year, and that was 800. So this would be cutting that basically in half. And when you start to think about the other requirements, both city and franchise, speed limit, parking areas, we do believe that's a manageable approach. Other pedestrian zones. So Mount Trashmore is currently geofenced. That pathway is, that surrounds the lake in the park is your second busiest pathway to the boardwalk. And we believe it's primarily for recreational use in terms versus transportation, so it should continue to be that way. Town center is currently prohibited or is currently a pedestrian zone. Met with the Central Business District Association Board of Directors and they support continuing that prohibition now. The thought is that it's a small enough area that it's, you can still walk around it fairly easily is the thought behind it. And that there currently needs to be improvements to pedestrian, to crossings of Independence Boulevard and Virginia Beach Boulevard to make this connection to neighboring, neighborhoods even more fluid. So right now, they propose to continue that being prohibited. Now, the new larger one is the shore drive corridor. And we met with the Bay Area Advisory Commission, I did three times to talk through this issue. They developed a position that was forwarded to you through Mr. Leahy, that they believe that for now, until all the shore drive corridor projects are completed, that they do not have the adequate infrastructure to be able to support motorized scooter use, scooter use safely within their corridor. And the next slide shows the map of that area. So this is a kind of a planning area map that designated shore drive corridor. You can kind of see the density there, but that is where they proposed for it to be a prohibited zone. That would be geofenced. And then the map on the left is the geographic area that we're designated as the resort area. Go to the next, please. Thank you. So in terms of fees, right now, you do, the city does receive fees. It does receive business property tax and the $70,000 to $80,000 range for scooters that are registered in Virginia according to the Commissioner of the Revenue. These would be new fees. So $100 per scooter times 1,000 would be roughly $100,000. That would be used primarily to reimburse the city departments that are having to enforce this use within the right of way. A fee in some larger markets do a dollar per scooter per day, 50 cent per scooter per day would go towards bikeways and trails infrastructure, which would be in the $180,000, $1000 range per year. And the theory would be that the scooters, motorized scooter use would be able to take advantage of that infrastructure that gets improved throughout the city is the theory behind that. The third fee would be that one-time initial fee for year one, if you want to operate in the resort, it would be $10,000. And if you want to operate everywhere else except the resort, $5,000. And the thought behind that is that it would help reimburse the city for the new signage, the parking corrals, and the other program management startup costs that we would experience. If we go to the next, please. So as we head down the home stretch here, we believe that the city should have the right to revoke franchise licenses similar to others in the city. Should there be repetitive violations of the franchise license agreement? This inventory replacement, when the city of Norfolk first awarded their franchise license to a company, they required that they all be brand new. It's our understanding, and this varies industry-wide, that the shelf life on these scooters are anywhere from three to four months at the most. And so to replace them with, if they come out with a newer model within 30 days, may not be unreasonable, especially if they have better safety features and technology continues to evolve, that they are a better user experience and, and better safety experience. Speed limits. This one was a city code revision, but the, the first one is a 15 mile per hour speed limit on these scooters in general. That's what they kind of operate on now. But I've ridden one within the last week that went 21 miles an hour. So, and it wasn't downhill. So it was on a level surface. So that would help to regulate those to be a, a citywide use and, and speed limit. Go ahead. So these are some fundamental aspects of the franchise agreement. And again, you know, these are best practices that, that, one of the benefits of waiting until now is that we continue to build off what the other localities, particularly in Virginia, have worked through and, and interviewing them and listening to what they would have done differently, having gone through the experience. And so some fundamental pieces are maintenance plan, management plan, safety plan, and staffing plan. And what these do is they outline, and these are things the companies are already, some of them are already doing now, but what is your staffing plan on the ground here in Virginia Beach or very close here regionally to manage your program face-to-face on the ground? What is your plan for education? What is your plan for staffing? And that, that could also be a jobs production standpoint as well. So if we go to the next, David, thank you. Data sharing is important. I didn't get into the details here, but there's a lot of technical requirements. One of the key areas of clarification I'd like to make is that we do not want to own consumer data. We do not want to own people's financial information or any of that. What we would like to get is generically where they're operating and then all of the different aspects of the user experience. And that would also help us, and I'll have a slide at the end, manage where these scooters are, you know, help manage that limit that we're proposing and the geographic limit to them as well. A lot of the companies did approach the city and say, you know, we would like to do pop-up education events primarily in the resort area. Your city code currently kind of prohibits that as a advertising or marketing event through these franchise licenses. This will allow this to happen in some public spaces, these pop-up education events. They, they were still occurring on private spaces, but this helps expand the platform by which they can provide that educational experience. And then provisions for special events. So the majority of special events that we have, particularly in the resort area, may not be compatible with motorized scooter use. For example, we have a lot of runs. We have a lot of 5Ks, 8Ks, half marathons, marathons, that you have a lot of street closures. And when you have those street closures, it compresses where people park from coming out, from out of the area and where they go to either run or to watch somebody run. And it's not really conducive for motorized scooter use. Now, there may be special events that are open where you want to park once and you want to get around the resort that might be appropriate to permit with the special event. And we would like to give the city the discretion to determine which those are and working with the event producers themselves and the scooter companies. So insurance requirement. This, my understanding for the most part is kind of boilerplate of what we require, the city requires to operate on public property in the city. There shouldn't be too many surprises here. I do appreciate Jeff Watermull with your finance department who's here that helped us develop this language and incorporate it into the document. If we go to the next, please. This is kind of the tool, this is a very basic screen from a tool of a company that they provide a tier of services. Some are free, some are, you know, roughly in the $10,000 a year range that they take that data. So through this franchise license process, the scooter companies will provide the data through the city to these contracted companies that would do the analytics with that data. And in this case, this is just a basic one showing Arlington County, they have bike share, scooter share, and car share. The seven companies that operate those, where they're live and where they are in Arlington at that given time. If you click on different options with this, it could show you heat maps of by the hour dating back all year long as to how many of these devices were used where, for how long, what the frequency of trips are between areas. And it also helps the scooter companies obviously manage where they park these vehicles, where they stage them for use and that, and how they manage their inventory. So it would give basically the city eyes on managing the requirements that are in the motorized scooter agreements. We would have, for example, 10 to 20 end users, meaning that police, planning, Parks and Recreation, or Public Works could have access to view these as well. So as we move forward, these are kind of the steps that we, that we see on the horizon to consider. And one would be, depending on your direction today, issuing this RFP. It's not necessarily a procurement process, but it is a license to operate the right of way. The most recent one that I dealt with about two years ago was when Megabus wanted to have a stop at the resort area. It's currently at the former dome site, kind of driveway there where they pick up folks and continues to be decent ridership from Richmond, Washington, and the northeast corridor. And they received a license and they provide the city a fee for that to basically have a bus stop in the right of way. So that's the last time that we've issued or that, I was associated with issuing one related to transportation. So we would issue that basically within the next two weeks and over the next month, provide the companies 30 days to respond to that. They are used to doing that throughout the country. That shouldn't be unreasonable. During that period, there would be a cutoff date, but they would email city staff with, or contact us with any questions they had. Similar to a procurement process, we would provide that question to everybody and the responses, anybody that was interested, and the responses to that for clarification before they submit. If additional time is needed, we could try to work with that. But currently, the next step would be to come to you with those city code changes, those three that I outlined that are new. Remember, the one will be the 25 mile per hour speed limit that would continue to, to stay in the code. Sometime in the November, December timeframe, we'd recommend the November timeframe so that we're not cutting it too close, that we would evaluate the proposals upon receipt somewhat, somewhere in the end of the month, in November through mid-December, and that we would be in a position to come back to city council with some recommended awards to certain companies that met, that were responsive to those. And over the next, the first few months of the calendar year, we would work through the different city departments to outline responsibilities. A lot of them already have those responsibilities now, but managing these franchise licenses would be kind of a new responsibility for some. So we would coordinate with those departments on what their duties were and try to seamlessly be able to manage this for them to be effective March 1st of next year. One of the key issues that's kind of out there is that if you were to change the code, we would need to talk about when is the effective date of that code. For example, if you change the city code and you say that franchise licenses are required to operate in the city of Virginia Beach, in theory, the two companies that operate in Virginia Beach would have to pull their scooters from the building to be rented in the city until and unless they received a franchise license sometime early next year. As an option, you could have a deferral date on that effective date and basically they could operate until, unless they receive a franchise license when they're awarded. This is kind of a slow season for them anyway, as you've, as you've probably noticed. And so it's, I've heard in talking to them that it's not that huge of an issue either way, but it's just a consideration. But with that, I'll stand by for any questions you might have.
Okay, Mr. Wood, Rosemary, Jess, and Ryan.
Brian, thanks a lot. That's very comprehensive information. I had a number of questions. Can you go to the insurance page?
Yes, sir.
So when I, I want to go forward one. Nope.
No, it's back, it's back two.
It was on there and you just skipped past it.
Oh.
There you go.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I know in California where they've done this, there's, and I just wonder about the, the limits on the conference general liability insurance because my concern is people who, who interact with the scooters and get injured, if, if the rider doesn't have insurance, obviously that's what this, that number two bullet is supposed to cover, correct?
Sorry, that's.
Okay, so, so I'm just wondering about the, the amounts because I know, again, and I can't remember what city it is in Southern California, but it's five million per occurrence and, and no annual aggregate. So that, that's something that I think we need to look at. I don't really need the details on that.
Okay. I, I do believe that was the difference with Richmond. I believe theirs is, might be higher, and that might be why you have one operator there.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's my question because, you know, we don't want to have them run out of insurance if there's injuries because we knew there were 60-some just this summer. The, the other, the other thing that, talking about the sidewalks, you, so you said you want to allow them operated on the sidewalks?
The, within the resort area, currently they're prohibited, so they will continue to be prohibited there. But elsewhere in the city, the state code allows for them to be operated and we would say yes.
Unless.
Unless, so the majority of folks, you know, should operate on local roads that are 25 mile per hour or less.
What I'm saying is I believe there's, there's a, there's a section.
Yes, sir, you're right. Unless they are, unless they are encumbering the reasonable use of that sidewalk, something to that effect.
So when you talked about the parking of, of these things, and can you go to that section where you talk about where they're allowed to be parked citywide?
Yes, please. Sorry, David, I thought this was, so it's somewhere near the front there.
First or second slide?
It's.
Very close to the front.
Go forward.
Go forward to.
Okay, so when you say no, no device should be parked in that, so can they be parked on sidewalks?
So they are allowed to be parked on sidewalks if, for example, you have a 10-foot wide sidewalk and you're not encumbering 48 inches to pass.
I don't, I don't see that on there, so.
Okay, so, so this would be franchise, what I try to do is provide y'all just a term or, you know, a sentence fragment.
The, the city spent millions of dollars on building handicapped accessible sidewalks and, and if we're saying we're all of a sudden going to say, well, we're going to clutter them up with scooters and people can't get by, that's, that kind of. them up with scooters and people can't get by, that's, that kind of hurts the whole handicapped accessibility.
It's currently against city code to inhibit the passing of on a sidewalk. I believe it's 48 inches.
However, if you drive down through the Bayside section where Mr. Jones represents, you can drive all through there and you will see them blocking sidewalks all up and down in the Haygood area. And I drive, I drive that way almost every day and I see that. So I just want to make sure if we have the ability to limit where they're parked on sidewalks based on the width so that, so that we don't impede handicap accessibility. I think that's.
We would have improved enforcement of that, yes, sir.
And I have issue, I think we need to strongly think about where these things are ridden on sidewalks because that's where a number of the accidents occurred outside of the resort. You talked about sharing data. I think it's important we also make sure they share crash and injury data as part of this, like on a monthly basis, similar to how we require other entities that have agreements with the city. So, for example, pawn shops have to report things on a certain basis and precious metal dealers, so I think, I think it's a similar thing. So if they would, they would provide the crash and injury data. Let's see, there was a couple other things. So, yeah, I didn't quite understand if you said about 16 versus 18. So you're saying that we would say 16, but the scooter companies already have 18 as a...
That's correct. So the difference would be that it would be a violation of law and enforced that way. This way, with 18 now, it's basically a violation of their user agreement. So it would be how they enforce that with their users versus a.
But a scooter company doesn't allow you to ride it if you're under 18, right?
Correct. Well, that's their user agreement, yes, sir.
Okay, so why would we make it 16?
We thought that would be a compromise.
Encouraging people to break their, break their user agreement, right?
Well, the difference with the city code revision is be whether you owned it or rented it. That would be the primary difference. But, 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 so the thought was is that we're seeing that folks are, there's an inability to manage that age, obviously. And so that 16, 16 at the very least would be you're able to operate a much larger motorized vehicle and that.
I thought it was, I'm sorry, I thought it was 18 unless with the consent of a illegal guardian.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so you can be underage with the consent of your illegal guardian.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, so the other thing, we talked about the Shore Drive area where we've had the Shore Drive Community Coalition and the Bayfront Advisory Commission both petitioned to have that area geofenced off. Is there, and I don't know, it's, I guess, a council question or a legal question, is there a method whereby other areas could have a similar petition for that? Because, and Louis knows, I don't know how many civic leagues are involved in Shore Drive Community Coalition, but a number of those, and then Bayfront Advisory covers that whole area there. And I don't know if that's something that other areas may want to participate in and can we put that as part of, and Mark, I don't know if we can do that or not, but that may be, maybe something that could be there, I think.
So in terms of the criteria we put forward, we believe in terms of density and the other factors that have been outlined, that we've identified the four main areas that are the most susceptible to conflicts or maybe don't have the optimum infrastructure available. Everywhere else is very similar geographically and physically.
But the difference is the citizens in those, in that one area have come to the city and said, please don't do this. And I think if there are citizens in other areas that want to petition, then we need to have a, have a method, method for that. The other thing, another issue that I've seen is a bunch of them laying, laying flat in different areas. And I understand there is technology that indicates when they're not upright. I think we ought to have that in there, have an upright requirement that any time that there's an alert that one of them is laying flat, that they're required within a reasonable amount of time to stand and back up because, again, that impedes.
That's a great pickup, but something that we have had in one of our drafts. It would give alert to the company and in theory, you have an hour to go and put it back upright so it's not obstructing sidewalk.
That's it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Rosemary, then Jess, an hour.
Well, living right on Atlantic Avenue, I can tell you, since we banned them, it's really been so much better. It was so crazy this summer when they were everywhere and very dangerous. Anyway, I think eight is too many, you know, in the docking station areas. I think in the resort, it should not be no more than six. One of the things that's really troubled me is there was no markings on the scooter. So if you see someone violating the rules, there was no way to report who it was. They all looked the same and zoom, they're gone. You know, they need to have some big identifying number or something on each one. So yes, there's a number that you can call, but if you can't tell them who it was, it's not going to be helpful. So we really, they need to be identified in some, some way. So there'll be no more than 400 in the resort, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. And that was by that map, Bird Neck Road to the Atlantic Ocean, 42nd Street to Rudy Inlet.
So that's a pretty big, and this summer, there were like 1,000 there, right?
There was roughly 800 that we, that we know of.
Like a million. In fact, as I was on my way here today, one of my neighbors says, we're not going to get the scooters back, are we? I mean, people really.
Something to consider is that last fall, Bird pulled their inventory as well, so it was also quiet last fall as well without the code changes.
The other thing I'm concerned about, the geofencing, when we put, you know, we had the stages before we banned them, we restricted what they were doing. And they were supposed to be geofencing and it wasn't working. They were not supposed to be on the boardwalk and they were there anyway. So I really have concerns on this geofencing. How do we know it's really, really working? Because last, that was one of the reasons we went ahead with the ban because they weren't following the rules and the geofencing wasn't working. So we need to make sure that this geofencing really does work because otherwise they're going to be where they're not supposed to be.
The technologies are perfect, but I know at the sergeant level, the second precinct and depending on the areas, that's geofence, they do testing with, with the companies physically in the field to try to test them. There are definitely cases that technical reasons have gotten around that.
On the boardwalk and taking pictures of them and they were there. But I just want to say, Brian has been everywhere, talking to everyone on this. He has done a very comprehensive, incredible job of reaching out to almost anybody that moved who wanted to talk about this.
Thank you.
Great job, Brian.
Thank you.
Good, Jess, another hour.
I have a few questions about some of the data and then I have just some questions in general. But on the, the survey that we did, do we, do we have a way to track where they were coming in in terms of like where their IP address was showing them in terms of locality or anything like that?
I'll ask. We do have a summary report from the company, if anybody's interested in seeing it. That's about eight pages that, that talks about the results of the survey.
I would love to, but I mean, I'm, it's not, it's really not here or there, I'm just more curious. And then I had another question kind of on curiosity. For the companies that you referenced that do require helmets, do they provide the helmet with the scooter?
Most of the companies do provide an option and actually that, I misspoke a little bit, that option will become available within the next six months. There's a company that is working for that.
How do they do that?
They, and so I don't know if all the companies are currently doing that, but how they do it is that you take a picture with the helmet on and I don't know if they track timestamp and location.
How do they provide a helmet?
Oh, immediately? It's difficult. What they do is you write in and you take a pledge to, you know, safe rider behavior and they send you a helmet. It's usually within seven days. The majority of companies will do that.
But so if I'm visiting and I want to rent one, there's no way for me to comply with a rule like that unless I brought my helmet.
I don't know how it works.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
That's fine. I realize that that's not in your, I was just curious how the mechanism was enforced. I spoke with one company that mentioned that they were going to be rolling out a vehicle that had the ability to put more than one passenger on it and it would be designed that way. In your one scooter recommendation or one rider per scooter recommendation, how would that work if a company did roll out a vehicle that was, they meant to be operated with more than one rider?
That's a great question because it leads to a discussion about if not motorized scooters, what device? And as technology continues to evolve and ingenuity continues to evolve, I think that we will be revisiting this issue periodically.
I just.
So I think we would revisit it. To be honest with you, we would take a look at that vehicle to see if it, if it met our criteria or not and, and go from there. That's a great point.
To your, what you spoke to, I suspect at some point we will see, like with bicycles, you can put a child or another passenger on and it'd be designed for that purpose. I'm interested in seeing how we can maybe add like a caveat to that that says if the scooter company somehow rolled out a vehicle that was designed for more than one rider, you know, we could, they could apply for an exception or something. I hate to say that we, they improve their vehicle and we can't let them put more than one rider on it. The other question I had is how are we differentiating between what a motorized scooter that is meant for roadway use, like a 49cc scooter versus these scooters that are obviously stand-up? And is there language that determines the difference between them? Or would these rules apply to those scooters?
It would not apply to those that are fit for the road. And I believe that's primarily by licensing, I believe. I don't want to step out of my, my lane here, literally, but.
The reason I ask is because a motorized scooter that's built for the road does not have an insurance requirement on it, but it does have a plate requirement on it. And I'm wondering how we're differentiating because those, those little scooters that are like under 50ccs that don't have the insurance requirement but have to be plated by per DMB, they, I mean, some of them don't go very fast at all. And so I'm just curious how we're, if this would impact that.
Answer that question.
Okay. I think we should find an answer to that question. And then the, as far as the 10 mile an hour speed limit on Atlantic Avenue, is that going to be enforced via geofencing so that the scooter would automatically slow to that speed?
They can, and again, the technology is not perfect, but they can moderate the speed. You know, say they limit to eight so that there's some standard deviation there that it not go above 10. But yes, ma'am, that's the mechanism to do that.
Okay, and then on page, on slide 16, we're talking about how many scooters we're going to allow. I'm wondering also, I have a concern, I don't, I realize there's a safety concern, but in terms of if we're insulating the amount of scooters that can be on there, we're then creating, we could potentially be creating a demand which then would raise the price of how much these scooters would cost to operate and inadvertently make a very affordable mode of transportation unaffordable. So I'm wondering what language could be in there that would make it flexible to determine that, hey, if this becomes a booming success and we do everything right and the, which I realize is a high standard, but if we get to a point where these become a really great way of being, being utilized as affordable transportation for people, how do we prevent them becoming unaffordable and therefore negating any positive benefit we'd be getting from them? I guess that's more of a, just a comment and some food for thought. And I'd also like to know in the cities that they're operating in, what has normalized for the ones that have had these for a long period of time in terms of how many scooters are being used and what the rate they're normalizing at for the cost?
What we've seen is that some, and we struggled with a little bit, is that some localities around the country, and we, again, we try to focus on Virginia because of Virginia law and the localities here, is that some of them charge by the mile or by use. And we believe until we have a year under our belt to try to track using, you know, the software and a lot of tools, the type of use, that a flat rate might be more appropriate and that we know what the impact is. There may be a more appropriate way of doing it by mileage or by number of rides after we have that year of operating under a franchise license. In terms of the fees in general, you know, this would be a year license, so it's something that you could tweak the fee from year to year, you know, awarding each year is what we would look to.
We could also tweak the amount of scooters as well.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And you answered my other question about how long the franchise agreement would be for. And then I have a similar, I have a concern, but kind of in the opposite way that Councilman Wood brought up about geofencing a neighborhood. I think it would be important if we're going to agree to geofence an entire part of the city that we have a process for other neighborhoods that would want to do the same thing. I think it's inherently unfair that we're giving special treatment to certain neighborhoods and not to all of them. But I also think that a place like Shore Drive and maybe not right now is not the time to push this issue, would be very beneficial for this mode of transportation since it's a condensed area with lots of retail and other things that people might want to use something like that. But the biggest concern I have is that none of this will be successful unless we commit to putting the infrastructure in to make it clear where people are allowed to be and where they're not allowed to be. In every city I've been in that allows any kind of shared vehicles, there are designated paths and there are designated parking. And so I, one of the things I've noticed, at least in Kempsville, that I actually think is a great idea and I might be unpopular for saying this, but I've noticed that they're being parked on top of the storm drains and they're not on the sidewalk and they're not impeding anybody's right-of-way. And it's an area that we've already got cement on, so it's not creating additional, you know, having to put additional pavement down. And I think it would be in our best interest to utilize that as maybe we throw a decal on it and we say, listen, you can park these on the storm drain and this is a great place to put it because it's not impeding anybody's right-of-way. But I really do think we should look at a map of where the highest uses are and we should have a discussion about painting lanes that are designated for shared vehicles, whether it's bikes or if, I'm sure one day we'll probably have somebody come in who wants to do a shared bike format and, or maybe we won't. My understanding is that's not as popular as the scooters in terms of cost. But I think that one of the things I noticed when I was in Boston is they had a designated crossing lane for scooters and bikes. So you would be riding in a shoulder that was designated for the scooter and then when you got to the intersection, it was like a crosswalk for the shared vehicle. So you couldn't be on the crosswalk, but you could be in that lane that launched over and then it gave you, they had actually had a separate light that indicated traffic patterns for the scooter and the bikes. And it made it way safer. It was very easy to understand. If you didn't know the rules in navigating the city that you were in, you could at least know, okay, this is a path for me to be in, this is how I cross the street and that's my light and I understand that. And that's all I have, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Aaron, and then Michael.
All right, well, here we are having discussion on regulation on scooters and yet we prematurely banned scooters with two weeks left within the resort tour season with the knee-jerk reaction. And I say that because here we are talking about it and the regulations now, but you know what has a lasting effect and a lasting reputation is that we're the city that's banning most of transportation. We are the city that's not innovative and welcoming to other modes of transportation and technology. That has a much longer lasting negative effect than the two weeks left we had of banning scooters, of banning scooters within the, within the height of the tourist season. So my question to you, Brian, would be during the survey, what was, do we know the age of the surveyors of those who we surveyed?
No, sir, that was, that was not a question that was on the survey.
I think that's, that's important to know, just so we get a range of who's, what are these answers are coming from as far as the interest level and the age groups. I think that's, that's important to note. Also, I think it's good we have this discussion though so we can, we can figure out how to safely implement and bring these scooters into our city safely. But what I would caution on is the heavy regulation and also creating the atmosphere where we are exempting people from personal responsibility. If you can ride a skateboard, how many people can ride a skateboard? Exactly. Exactly. Will you ride a skateboard? I think not. So if the scooters are out there, people are not exempt, if you get on a scooter, you have to have some personal responsibility too. You don't get to say, well, I'm going to blame the city, I'm going to blame the company, I'm going to sue this person or sue that person. There's personal responsibility for that as well. So you don't get to be exempt from, from making those decisions. Also, calling people or the police on people on scooters, you got to think about that. If I'm, if I'm someone, if I'm enjoying a scooter, whether or not I'm in, I shouldn't say, if I'm enjoying a scooter and somehow because you deem that I'm not following the law or something, you call the police or the people on me? We can, we have seen, especially with just riding scooters, so I would, I would really caution on that. The 16-year-old age limit, can you go to that slide?
Yes, sir. To the front, one more, I think.
This, when we look at who rides the scooters, primarily are kids, these are teenagers, people who don't have licenses, people who are not of age yet that have permits. And what I'm also. And what I'm also, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, before you, you can ride it, there is the company has to 18-year consent, but you have to either have, your parental guardian can give you consent to ride these things. Is that, is that true or not?
No, 18 is the age that they're, that the scooter companies in general, the two that operate in Virginia Beach, permit them to ride. Yes, sir. But now, what word is the difference is that if they own, and you'll see a lot of kids around the, around the city, around the country, this would affect that because there are a lot that have these electric scooters and they've had them for eight to 10 years. They've been out. There's not prevalent because the shared mobility platform is, the convenience factor, whether it be for homes, whether it be for cars, whether it be for scooters, is a game changer of convenience and that's why they're popular, frankly. So it would, to answer your question, would affect folks that own scooters, kids that own scooters that are younger than 16. But right now, the majority of companies require 18 regardless of parental consent. My understanding.
All right. That's all I had. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Aaron. Michael?
First, I have a question about process and about some of the feedback that we've heard here. For example, when Vice Mayor Wood asked for, for the inclusion of the reporting or Councilmember Wilson suggested that the parking standards move from eight to six, are those being incorporated into your plan or are those meant to be merely suggestions? I just want some clarity on how we're formulating the plan as we move forward. How do you perceive those, that feedback, Mr. Solis?
That is a great question because it's something that's not that clear cut. In terms of the eight versus six, we would go back and process it and then try to determine what, you know, what the best standard practice was. So that's kind of the only, the main one.
And those are just two examples that I'm using?
Yes, sir.
There have been a variety of different points of feedback offered today and I would like to have more clarity about what feedback specifically is incorporated. Because on the subject of scooters or more largely the subject of shared mobility, there is a difference of a philosophy on this council and that's okay. I'm comfortable with that and I respect it and I think it's probably ultimately good for the residents of the city because we can work on these discussions together to formulate a plan that is in balance with the needs of the residents of the city. But as we have discussions about formulating policy, I'd like to just have a sense of confidence that those, a variety of philosophies are being incorporated into that feedback. So that's one point that I have. I'm still not sure I know the answer, but maybe we can talk about it more in another setting. I'd like to take a moment to focus on the survey. This isn't the first time that I've expressed my concern about the results of surveys that have been presented to council. I appreciate and value the engagement perspective of surveys. Can you tell, can you just for, from my own clarification, tell me how many respondents?
Yes, sir. If we get back, a couple, is like the second or third. I want to say 5,806.
Three. So this is the folks, the number of views that, of the page, these are the number of participants.
Participants.
These are the total number of responses.
Meaning every click?
Correct.
For every question?
Five questions, so five questions. And then, for example, the open-ended question about, that was open-ended, comments, if somebody commented, somebody could like that comment, that's a click. Somebody could respond to that comment, that's an additional 129,000.
Okay.
So.
Can you tell me how many rides have, have been, have been executed in the city since the scooter services were introduced?
So the, the information we've requested from certain companies and they keep it proprietary. One of the companies did provide a, and it's, this is at your places, it's a four-page, two-page front and back, but this company has only been operated in Virginia Beach since mid-July, as an example. This company that did provide their data that's in front of you, 44,341 trips, 12,854 riders, 72,549 miles. The median distance per trip is 1.1 miles, which is that first mile, last mile that's targeted, 11 mile, 11 minutes per trip. And then this one is.
I think the key, can you go back to how many individual rides? 44,000 rides?
Yes, trips.
And that's, that's one company of two that are operating within Virginia Beach.
That company has been operating since mid-July to, this was to the end of September.
And that was, and that, so then those number of rides were to the end of September. So I think it's fair to say, just if we're comparing feedback, that you could say the number of rides of tens of thousands more than were participated as a respondent in the survey, correct?
That's, I think that's fair to say.
That's fair to say. I just want to point out the contradiction between the amount of riders, people who are making use of the product versus those who have responded. With that, with all respect and consideration to those who have responded and spoken very clearly those who have, I think that it's useful to compare the number of rides as a matter of consideration as well. I'd like to also ask a specific question about the parking, what we're referring to as parking. Could you go back to the slide with the image of the various scooters parked at the resort? What we call parking. I've seen these used in other cities. Is this meant as a deployment or as a parking corral?
This is meant as a parking corral and kind of a deployment, it's basically staging vehicles or devices for use. And while we're at the size, 12 by 4 is roughly about half the size of a, or maybe a little bit more than a parking space. The thought was that it wasn't about the number of scooters in terms of the space. So at 48, this is the largest corral that we're talking about. At 48 square feet, it was a reasonable area. That's why we recommend that.
But Mr. Solis, my experience with the product is that there's a distinction between what I would refer to as a deployment and what you, and what may, one may regard as parking. So when you talk about restricting the parking to eight, is, was what you mean, what I regard as deployment, meaning that's how many the providers would set up at one time?
It would be both. So we would work with the scooter companies to agree on the spaces. And so in theory, when you deploy in the morning after they've been charged, these would be appropriate areas for them that are very visible, very conspicuous, but yet organized in terms of where they're parking. So we believe the deployment and parking, we are trying to marry them in the resort area.
So there would be an expectation that if more than six or eight or whatever number was settled upon, that the providers themselves would, would pick them up?
Yes, sir, that's correct. When they need to be charged.
And I'm, I guess I would have a question about whether that's a fair expectation or not. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
And I'll look forward to having more information about that. I want to, I just made a note that the, the education events that occur are ones that I think could be useful. So I'm happy to see the incorporation of that into the plan. Much of our discussion here is focused at the resort. I wonder if, if there's, if you have any information or if you could present a distinction between riders at the resort versus other parts of the city. And then further, could you distinguish between those who are riding for what we regard as amusement and what were those who are riding for mobility?
One thing that we can do, that we contemplated adding into the RFP, would be for the companies require them to do user surveys. And a lot of them, as a matter of practice, do. They want to know if, are they being responsive? Are the regulations appropriate to allow for the type of use that the scooter companies are looking for? And one of the things that can be asked is, are you using this as a mode of transportation or amusement? And we could try to, we could find out that way. Otherwise, it's very difficult. But one thing to consider is the heat map that is in the handout in front of you does show, in the darker, the red, does show the frequency of trips, you know, by the city. And one thing to consider is that where you have a roadway network that is tighter or denser, it'll make that area more prevalent.
Well, I don't know if, I hope the public can see this map because what it shows to me is a significant amount of rides in a variety of different parts of the city, including the Rose Hall District that I have the privilege to represent here. And I'm extremely interested in the distinction about ridership on a road, about whether or not it could be 25 miles an hour. Because if people, if our residents and neighbors in other parts of the city are using this and implementing this technology for the purposes of mobility, then I would be very concerned about the restriction of, of access on roads that are above 25 miles an hour. In other words, how could they get to the next form of transportation, first or last mile, whatever, the bus? So these are some concerns that I have. I don't have a formulated position on that yet, but these are some things that I think we need more clarity on before we implement and adopt a policy that's more focused on the resort when in fact, a significant amount of rides are occurring through other parts of our city. And we haven't really even scratched the surface on the discussions about how these, this type of shared mobility is implementing our neighborhoods. And I think that's a key piece of the discussion we have to have here. And lastly, I appreciate the indulgence and the amount of time that we've spent on this and that I've consumed here, but I think it's critically important that we find a balance. And like it or not, this type of technology and shared mobility is going to be arriving in the marketplace. It has arrived in the marketplace, it has arrived in Virginia Beach, and it's incumbent upon us to find a solution that we can all work with that embraces it in a way that reflects the dynamism and the spirit and the optimism that exists in our great city of Virginia Beach. And I look forward to the chance to work on that project.
Okay, John and Jess, and if we can come to a conclusion.
First of all, I want to dito both Aaron and Michael's remarks. And I think this is one of the reasons why we wanted less briefings, so that we could talk to each other and hear what other people have to say and I do appreciate it. And I, I like many of the comments you made. I'm very much a free market person. So I'm very interested in understanding how Arlington Alexandria could have seven providers and I'd be interested in getting more about their experience. But if you could go back to the code, applications, the code section on there, remember the gentleman that came down here who was on the, something like a Segway, I forget what it was, talking about how his, I want to make sure that if we adopt these codes, that's the next, that we make, because it says, personal assistive mobility device. And I think that some of these things, and it talks, it talks about scooters, but it's unclear if that comment would apply, as I read it, that that would apply to all the things that are in that description. Am I reading that correct?
I don't blame you, but the current interpretation is that it does not. And that person that came down to speak to council has written exclusion from the city manager.
But my point is, people, if they have that certification, there ought to be a process by which, I know the lady had to go through a letter and this doctor and this horrendous process and it's just uncalled for. There's already a certification that takes that place. Why we're fixing things? This thing needs to make it very explicit that none of these restrictions apply to people who have handicapped authorized transportation, whether it's a powered wheelchair or if it's a Segway, whatever that authorized DMV licensed medically documented vehicle shouldn't, should be very clear in the code and they shouldn't have to go get a personal letter and go through all this. At my church, it was like almost two months and it just didn't make any sense. So why we're fixing something, if we could fix that, that would be great. Because that gets back to your point about, I liked it, is, so if I'm on the sidewalk, but the roadway's 45 miles an hour, that's okay?
The thought was that the scooters simply don't have the ability to keep up with motorized traffic.
But we allow bikes, it said bicycles, so I'm on the sidewalk.
That's correct.
See, this gets back to this issue of having rules that people can understand and simplicity, you know, form follows function. And I'm clear here, it looks like we have a form that doesn't relate to the function and I think that's going to cause a lot of conflict. So I agree with your process point. Before we go out with the public, before what we think we want them to comment on, it would be good that you think you've distilled all the stuff that's been said, it comes around the table and we say, is this really what we want the public to comment on? Because then we'll make sure that at least we all got heard. But I very much like the comments that were made here about the mobility. And if we're doing a neighborhood, I'm sure Lady Walier, what was the standard that we use to make these exemptions? And therefore, we should be able to look at other areas of the city without cities petitioning and they, if they're meeting this objective criteria, then it would just be something that we would prescriptively identify. It should be that objective. It should not be, you know, based on political efficacy of a community. There should be an objective standard if we talk about data analysis that we apply in any neighborhood that meets that criteria, whether it's North Beach or whether it's, you know, the Bayfront or whether it's a highly concentrated area in the Bay suburb, will all then just be set out. But I think we need to make sure that we're not Luddites about it and that in fact, we are welcoming and embracing a technology that might offer a more affordable alternative than a vehicle.
Thank you, Jess, and then we'll wrap up.
I had two other questions I missed in my notes, but on the insurance, there, we have confirmed that there is a product for them to purchase in the state of Virginia.
We have not confirmed that.
We have not confirmed that. Oh, the company?
Yes.
The company can buy general liability, yes.
No, but can they buy an auto, an auto policy specific to the use of these vehicles?
No.
But we don't know if that product picks up.
What is, what is the explanation of the auto liability?
So essentially, we are contracting with the company to do this. So this is a requirement not only for the riders but for the employees of the business. So the auto liability is mainly for the drivers of that company going, putting these scooters out in the morning, at night, or whatever they're doing. So there's an auto liability exposure there. But then the general liability is for predominantly the scooters and that's out there because there's nothing that these companies that I know of, that I'm aware of, that they can buy a non-owned insurance policy for their riders. What that may force is other products to start coming out in the market.
So the reason I ask that question is because I recall years ago when Uber came out, there was no shared risk provision on a person's individual automobile liability policy. It was created a gap in what the insurance of Uber and Lyft and the other rideshare companies were providing versus what your individual insurance policy. And perhaps that, I just am concerned that we're going to, we're going to create a requirement that can't be fulfilled. So that was why I was asking if we've confirmed if the product is available for them to purchase. And so you're saying that this liability is not for the rider, it's for the individuals working for the company?
For the auto liability. For the general liability is for the rider of the, of the scooters. The auto liability, which was the question, was specifically for the drivers of the company.
So if I'm on the scooter and I have an injury, I do, I am, I'm indemnified from having to be able to sue the company.
It depends upon the agreement between the company and the rider.
But for a point of clarification, that rider is not insured.
Correct.
That's okay. That was one of my questions about that. And then just in terms of excluding specific areas, is there a reason why we're excluding town center?
The feedback that I received, and it's currently prohibited today, is that it's a, primarily a pedestrian zone and that it's small enough that it's, it's walkable versus scooter, is the thought. And as an example, Brickshaw's applied a couple of different times in the city's history to operate in town center and they found that it wasn't a viable commercial product for them because people were able to walk four blocks one way and four blocks the other. So the thought was is that based on the feedback from the CBDA Board of Directors, was that the balance of the potential conflict in the pedestrian environment of motorized scooters versus the walkability or the small geographic area wasn't worth changing the code to allow them there.
So before they were geofenced, were people using scooters in the area?
They would stay on the periphery and you'll see them periodically, you did see them go through there.
The only reason.
But it wasn't heavy use.
The only reason I ask is I suspect as town center expands, which it will, people will start using them or want to use them more. Again, I don't like the idea of excluding a specific group of an area just because they apparently have a higher priority over some other parts of the city. But that's here and there. I just want to make sure that we, we do provide, if that's what we're going to do, we provide some mechanism for other. other people to get the same privilege. The other point that I had was, in terms of the funds we'll be collecting at whatever they are, I would really love for us to see a way that some of that money is going into a dedicated place for funding a shared use path on the Norfolk Southern right of way. Because while I realize we're applying for money any way we can to get it, it would be wonderful to expedite that project and have that as a main thoroughfare for shared mobility devices. And I think scooters provide a really excellent opportunity. And if we can take in any money to make that a reality, I think that would be to our advantage.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on, Mr. Leahy.
Counsel, so, I think we need at least a little direction. Given the timeframes that are approaching, the entire issue could become academic if we don't get something enacted by the end of the year. And Brian needs to begin moving forward on the franchise, preparing the franchise document, getting ready for, to put that out on the street, and then perhaps bringing you back some draft ordinances to consider. But it's a pretty short time between now and December 31st and government years, anyway, government time.
I just have a point of clarification. I don't understand, is the, is the, do we have to do it by the end of the year in order to be effective on January 1? Or we have to do it by the end of the year period, or we're forever barred from? Mr. Sox.
The deadline relates to the licensing. The law passed last year included a new Virginia Code Section 46.2, 1315. And at the beginning of that Code Section, it says, "Any locality made by ordinance or by even administrative action regulate scooters and/or established pilot programs." Towards the end of that section, it says, "Such ordinance or action may require persons offering motorized scooters for hire to be licensed, provided that owner after January 20, January 1, 2020, in the absence of any licensing ordinance, regulation, or other action, a person may offer them for hire." So, I interpret that to say, if you don't have a requirement for a license by January 1, you can impose a license requirement after that. I think you can have other regulations that you impose after that. I think you can issue franchises after that if you have by that date passed an ordinance that requires a license or a franchise. But that's what has to happen by the end of the year, the ordinance or the action requiring the license or the franchise.
Well, I'm not sure I got the same that you got, but you've looked at it a lot more than I have. Okay.
Do I understand correctly that as long, that we can, as long as we have a license by the end of the year?
A requirement, yeah.
License requirement, then we can continue to have a, have a license, but we can, we can promulgate rules and regulations or after that, is that correct?
That, that is my interpretation of it, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and John?
Back to, back where Lewis was. So, the only thing we, of all the stuff that's been proposed, the only thing we really have to deal with is that item. And I don't think that I heard a big, like, that was a philosophy or a difference relative to that. So, it sounds to me like we have another meeting in October. I don't know why that can't be addressed and allowed in time, because there's, we could still maybe get the other stuff done, because there's, there's a Fifth Tuesday in October, which we don't vote on the Fifth Tuesday of the month. So, there's plenty of time for us to get this other stuff and share. Example, we might hold a meeting or workshop or something.
All we got to do is create a license.
That's correct. I meant was, I'm referring to how you get the other pieces done in that same timeframe.
Then we can formulate what we want to do.
Right.
So.
But I think we can get that done.
Okay, Mr. Wood?
Yeah, no, I agree with this, because I think if, and Michael brought up a good point, that I made a recommendation, Rosemary made a recommendation, other people made recommendations. And, and the council needs to determine if they agree with these recommendations or not. And, and I think that if we can get that part out of the way, that gives us a little bit of breathing room to have more of these conversations. Because, you know, I, I think, I think there's a lot of merit to talking about how these areas are excluded or not excluded based on, based on what they want. So, I, I think if we just get that part out of the way, then, then we have some more time.
Just like short-term rentals.
Guy, and then?
Yeah, I was going to say, and I think we ought to have the actual language of, of the, of what we're adopting. I appreciate Brian's presentation. It's quite helpful to have shorthand. But I think before we actually adopt it, we really need to see what the ordinance says.
But we're not there as far as, as knowing exactly what we want to do after the license issue is concerned. I mean, we've got issues of liability. We've got issues of, of infrastructure requirements that are going to come about as a result of these, these things being on the roadway. I mean, this thing's going to cost the city a lot of money in the end. That's what it comes down to. And so, we got to think in terms of how we're going to recoup that money, because it's going to be expensive.
And there are no projections in these at all about the actual amounts that we expect to collect and the actual expenses that we expect to incur. I would certainly like to see those as well.
Well, no, it actually does say in there, $100,000 was going to be for the expenses, and then $180,000 was going to come out towards what Jessica was talking about, the shared, shared use stuff. But I, but I think that that's using lump sum. But if you go further and actually do the per-ride thing in, in second years or something like that, then you may be able to see. Because I was sitting there doing the math based on what Michael had asked about that thing from Lime, showing how many, how many rides. And it's significantly more if it's 50 cents per ride, as opposed to 50 cents per day or whatever per scooter. So, I mean, you could look at that. It's a difference of, of actually being able to build something on the, on the shared use path, as opposed to just being able to go by and sweep it up for the kind of money that we've got.
Hey, Michael?
Well, I only wanted to say that, you know, earlier, I referenced a potential difference in philosophy. I actually don't think we're that far away. And I think that the summary of the conversation that we just arrived to demonstrates that point. But as a, as a matter of practice, I wonder, I know that there's a shared mobility work group, and I, and I wonder if it would be useful. I don't know. I'm still gathering experience. But to have individuals with diverse perspectives on this issue, to just get into a table and, and sit down and, and talk these things through, I think we could come to a consensus very easily on these issues that appear to be dividing us, and provide clarity to staff, which we seem to be in need of.
Okay, we know where to at least get started from here?
I think I've got some, got some idea now.
Okay. Okay, at this point, I want to thank every, this was a very complicated issue. And I really think the time that we devoted to it was well-spent because of the complexity of what's going on. And once again, there were no easy answers on this, and, you know, we'll be moving forward. Mr. Leahy, I think at this point, if we can ask to defer the presentation on the small woman and minority swim, that's a very important thing.
Exactly what I was going to suggest, because I don't seem to have enough time to give it.
Right. You know, these times really deserve some very special attention. Okay, but at this point, can we go to council comments?
Do you want to talk about the schedule?
Right. Okay, Mr. Leahy, can you give us a, you know, update on where we're proceeding with the search firms?
Yes, sir. So, at this point, I believe, and I haven't been part of the process, but what I have been, what's been passed on to me is that Human Resources has collected the input that you all have forwarded. They have ranked them and have come up with the top two firms. They are ready to attempt to schedule those two firms to come meet with you in executive session. And I believe that the discussions we've had is perhaps you would want to schedule a special executive session on October 29th to do that. But that's certainly up to council.
You know, if, you know, with the permission of council, I think that would be a good, because here's the situation. If we did not have this discussion on the 29th, it will give the, to notify the companies, arrange for them to thing. And, you know, we all agree that, that, you know, this has to be a council decision going forward. And the other thing is if we were to delay this, you know, because then right after that, we're looking at the election and delays for a couple of weeks. And, you know, I think we can all agree that it's mission essential going forward. And then the other thing that would also allow this, the opportunity for, you know, can go through the schedule, you know, for the dome site?
The, the other, if you were to schedule.
I would just like to excuse myself.
Okay.
If you were to schedule a special closed session on October 29th, at the same time, you could also schedule a open session. And the, Ron Williams would be prepared to give a public presentation on the dome site agreement.
Right, yes, sir.
Well, to, to, to step back on that, you all have a policy that says for matters of importance, such as the dome site, you have a four-step process.
Right.
Starting with, at the end of the process, the public vote, your policy is that you have a public hearing on a, at a meeting prior to the public vote. Prior to that public hearing, you have a public briefing. And prior to that public briefing, you have a closed briefing.
Correct.
So, staff is prepared, you know, if, if it's council's wish, to have a special meeting call and a closed session to provide you a briefing on the proposed draft of the dome site development agreement next week on the 22nd. If we were to do that, then we could call another. If you're already having a meeting on the 29th to go into closed session to discuss the executive search firm, you could have an open session briefing on the 29th, which would then give the public two weeks to digest that prior to a public hearing, which could then be held during your regularly scheduled meeting on the 12th. And then if it was council's desire, you, and you could proceed to a vote on the development agreement on November 19. But that is all, that is all subject to council's desire. One thing that, that I wanted to point out was that I believe you're scheduled to receive the report of the independent investigation also on November 12.
We're going to do that on the 13th.
Okay, all right.
Because this way, you know, you know, I did hear some concerns, you know, about the sensitivity, you know, with the thing about having a full agenda. And I think we also have some other business items that we're going to be talking that night. And by isolating and allowing, and this would also allow for a more robust discussion, and we wouldn't be encumbered, you know, by time constraints. So, in consideration to those who expressed, you know, but once again, we, you know, we have to, in one way that we have to show that we are the resilient city, that we are moving forward, and we are looking for economic development. But the, but this also allows us the opportunity to respect the families. So, by having, you know, that other session, I know it's an imposition on time for the meeting on the 13th next month, but also bring it on the 29th, you know, but especially with the importance of getting those firms selected so they can get going. Because otherwise, there would be another month delay probably in, you know, getting things established. But also, you know, you know, just moving forward with a very major project that could have a very, has the potential to be a very positive, you know, you know, win for our council in our city. So, with that, if that's okay, if we can move in that direction. Okay? All right. Yes, Barbara?
The time for the special closed briefing on the 22nd, I would request that it be 4:00 or later. I have something already scheduled earlier.
I, I think the plan was to do it after the workshop that day. So, I think it would be 4:00 or later.
Yeah, we will accommodate you, Mrs. Henley.
All right, thank you.
Okay, great.
Good, Mr. Moss.
Okay, anybody else on council comments?
Well, we got, let's get John back.
Okay. Okay, we'll wait for John to come in. And then Aaron. Okay, Rosemary, then Aaron.
So, last night, our police had the first time ever Police Citizens Academy for the Spanish-speaking community in our city. And it was a really big success. A lot of people were there. This was a fine job with Chief Severa, who worked with them, and Captain Shannon Witten Dahl. And we had some wonderful police officers engaged with the folks. And it's kind of funny, because no one really signed up for it, but they all showed up for it. And there were about 50 people who came out for, for this, and they were really excited. And it was a great time of engagement and building trust between the police and this community.
Okay, great. Thank you, Rosemary. Aaron?
So, we were supposed to have our small women minority swim program update today. We kind of, we ran out of time. But what I have here passing around is the ordinance to address show tip bidding for construction and, and for goods and services. I think it should be coming around, yeah, coming around now. But here, I will not be bringing this to council for a vote for at least until sometime in February. I just want to give council enough time to look at it, bring your ideas, ways we can make it better, so to speak. This is coming off the recommendation of the disparity study, and is for to pursue a show tip bidding initiative for our city. I know we, we set our aspirational goal of 12% in trying to get participation in minority owned businesses. So, this is just an ordinance to see how we can get there. So, again, I won't be bringing this before council for at least until February sometime. Again, ideas, any, please look at it, any ways we can make this better. I'd love to have everyone's input.
Aaron, thank you very much for that initiative. Michael?
I just wanted to say that I had the, really the pleasure of serving as the liaison to the Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission, where I served for a number of years prior to being appointed on council. And last Thursday on December 10th, the Human Rights Commission held its 25th Annual Awards Dinner, where they honored a variety of residents from Virginia Beach who had made significant contributions to, toward the human and civil rights of individuals in Virginia Beach. Mayor Dyer was there, of course. And we were joined by council members Wilson, Tower, Abbott, and Rouse. And it was a really wonderful evening. And the work that happened at the Human Rights Commission is something that we, I know we all value. And there was a wonderful representation of the diversity and richness of life in our city. So, I want to thank them.
The Human Rights Commission is definitely a point of pride in our city. Okay, anybody else? And thank you all for a very robust conversation today. John?
Only one, and I know we talked about last week, but I just don't want to forget somewhere on the schedule that we talked about, but the bond referendum for flooding. I'm going to keep mentioning it till we have it.
It's coming up. Yeah, we'll, we'll get it.
Right. Thank you very much, sir Tom.
Okay, are we ready for?
Yes, sir. Okay, under ordinance's resolutions, we do have a speaker on a number of them, but I believe you're going to do the same thing.
Right, that is correct.
Okay, item K1, I believe we have other speakers on. I think we will. So, K1 would be, would be heard. And I imagine people in council may want to tweak that one a little bit. So, that one would be heard.
And if I could make a recommendation that if we can, you know, vote on this, you know, but anybody that might have an objection to any one of the things can certainly, you know, state it out, you know, upfront. Would that be okay?
I have communicated mine to.
Do you want to do it out front, or do you want it now?
Yeah, do, do you want to do it now, in terms of any type of?
I think, I mean, we're going to be voting out there.
Yeah, we're going to be voting out there anyway. But I just want to make sure everybody has an opportunity, you know, to, you know, to weigh in.
Are we voting individually on the items in the legislative agenda?
No, I think we voted, but, but then you can, if you have any exceptions that you would like to do it, but, you know, this way we can vote it, you know, up and down.
I think historically, you've had, council members have said, I'd like to have this one, this one, or this one removed for a separate vote. You voted on those and then voted on the, the package as a group. Is that what you meant?
I'm not opposed to, well, either way.
Okay.
Is that what you meant, Mr. Mayor? I'm just trying to understand.
What's, what's the thing of the bottom?
That's what, I think that's what you were trying to get at.
Yeah, yes, that's what I'm trying to, you know, just say that if we have any type of things that want pulled, but, you know, then we can go forward from there. Okay.
So, can we, can we have a list of items that want to pull now, though, if our council or somebody can?
But, but I, we're going to have speakers on it.
We're probably going to have speakers on it anyway.
We're not going to be voting on it as consent.
So, we're most likely going to be voting on each item?
So, so, Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I think, I think the way it's going to be is, let's say that we move for approval I think, I think the way it's gonna be is, let's say that we move for approval of this item, however excluding items 7, 9, and 11, or whatever. Pull those out and vote on those separately.
So we'll all be given the opportunity to say what I want?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That way we have total council inclusion. Guy?
What is the public comment, if any, allowed on legislative packs tonight?
We had the public comment last week. But once again, they can speak on it. It's an agenda item tonight.
As an agenda item. So in order to get public, if there are speakers on it, they're gonna be able to speak on individual items, or not?
There's at least one speaker, so.
As of right now, there's just one speaker. But, you know, but once again, I just want to make sure that each council member has, you know, the right to, you know, to weigh in on the particulars. Okay?
Okay. So the remaining items, does anybody have issues with any of them? I'm voting, hold on, hold on. Sorry, Barbara, share her hand up.
Well, this thing of council-sponsored forums and events, you know, we're sort of, this is a really new policy and a major change. I particularly have heartburn, no pun intended, about providing food. I mean, the forums that I have had and events that I have sponsored, I've provided the food myself.
Two or three you're talking about?
Both.
Okay.
You know, I, you know, it's one thing to have a speaker or something of that nature, but to provide food for attendees at city expenses is going pretty far. And like I say, the forums that I've had, when we had the first one on the Seale Rise and so forth, I paid for it. And when we had the all-day forum, when people came, there was a fee charge to cover their food. And my forums-
If I can, item two doesn't have food.
I do food. Yes.
Item two just says expenses of more than $50.
Catering.
But $50 or less, so.
Okay, well-
I don't think you really don't cater much with 50 bucks.
Well, I know, but even so, you know, I noticed the other one, you know, is the substantial amounts of money for food, and I'm just expressing my concern.
So did you want to vote no on that, on those?
Well, maybe I will. You know, it's just that in the past-
On both of them, or?
I've paid for it, and I'll continue to, because I just don't think that's public expense.
Okay. Hey, John?
I want pulled, I want both items pulled from consent.
All right.
Does our public discussion-
Okay.
I share, Mrs. Henley's, and I'll say the balance of my remarks till the formal session.
Okay.
I think, I wanted, my comment is on actually both of those because I thought our policy was we would share these ordinances prior to a packet. So I would actually request that we defer so that the respective council members can make their business case to the body before we vote on them. I don't, I don't want to make a decision on either of these when the only conversation we had on two was a governance retreat that two members were not present for. And I think Sabrina deserves the diligent, the opportunity to make the case for why she want, thinks that this is a good investment of public money.
Do we concur to, you know, to defer this?
Happy to defer it.
Everybody's okay with consent for defer?
Consent for deferral on two and three.
For how long of a deferral?
I'll open to whatever the body would like.
Should be able to do it by our next meeting, I would hope.
Yeah.
Do you have speakers?
Just one, Barbara.
I think we need to have a substantial discussion about this, and because particularly as it relates to council member forums, it gets precariously close to looking like a campaign event. And any type of expenditure of public resources, that approach, that appearance is problematic.
Okay, you know, I think-
We have additional speakers.
Yeah, we're gonna have, yeah.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't matter. We've got another speaker, so we're gonna hear him.
Well, I agree with that. My point is, we need to really have a complete discussion about it, so I'll look forward-
Yeah, well, there's a motion to defer. There could be a motion to defer, but what I'm saying is that there's now additional speakers. So anybody on any other items? Under ordinances and resolutions? So we're pulling K1, 2, and 3. Everything else will be on consent.
Oh, sweet.
Okay? Under planning?
And so with pulling those, are you still deferring those?
Well, whatever the motion is. I mean, ideally, there'd be a motion to defer that somebody would make for each one. Okay, under planning, Anthony P., I'm sorry? Okay. Anthony P. and Kelly Lynn Spira, conditional change of zoning, O2 office, conditional H12, Northern Corner of Hensdale Street, across from 520 Constitution Drive, Bayside District.
I guess I'm okay with that. It's kind of an odd piece of property.
It is.
But it is contingent, or it is a part of the apartment project there, so I guess I'm gonna go along with it.
Item two in the Beach District has speakers.
It does?
Yes.
Okay.
Item three, Sayer Enterprises, Inc., motor vehicle sales at 3096 Southland Haven Road, Beach District.
I don't have anything on that, no.
Item four, HR Kemp's River LLC, Bonnie's Corner Associates, conditional use permit indoor recreation facility, 1205 Fordham Drive, Kemp'sville.
Good.
Glam Life Beauty Bar LLC, KHHR Haygood LLC, Tattoo Parlor, 4663 Haygood Road, Bayside.
That's the Glam Beauty Parlor.
Close. You okay with that?
Yours. That's yours.
I'm sorry, Glam, I'm fine with that, you know.
David and Carol Hawkins, Residential Kennel, 2125 Tennesse in Court.
I've heard no complaints.
Okay.
Tell you what, we've been here for a little while. Could we just take a short break?
You're my hero, session mayor.
Oh, let me read the closed session first, and then we shall adjourn, okay? "The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.237A. A Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237A3, voter registrar office relocation. Public contract, discussions of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237A29, voter registrar office location. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.237A8, voter registrar office relocation and closed session confidentiality. Legal matters, consultation with the legal and briefings of by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A7, national opioid legislation. And then finally, personnel matters, discussion, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance. Demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237A1. Council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees have a motion."
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Henley?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Savitt?
Aye.
Mr. Rouse?
Aye.
Mr. Verucci?
Aye.
Mr. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Witten?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Fox, Mayor Luke?